All right, everyone. Good afternoon and welcome to the September ninth, 2025 Salinas City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Patty?
Good afternoon. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotunda.
Zoom webinar participation is available for members of the public. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the posted agenda on the city website. And with that, I will ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, into your republic which stands on a mission under God indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
All right, thank you. Patty, why don't you see who's here?
Councilmember Barajas.
President.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember DeRigo.
Present.
Councilmember Dalarosa.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Here.
Mayor Donahue.
I am here.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will do something we routinely do in recognize City of Champions accommodations, except we're going to start in a unroutine fashion. So I'm going to turn to Councilmember Barrera and ask him to start the meeting off.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Rodeo Association for being present here. This month, we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And right outside, we're going to be honoring the Salinas Valley Charros, who every year they promote events, raising funds for charity cases. And I'm going to ask Mr. Adán Gómez if he can come to the podium. Can we give him a round of applause? And then I'm going to ask the president of the Rodeo Association, if you can let the public know what the Salinas Valley Charros do at the rodeo. And we're also celebrating El Grito, which is coming up next, this coming weekend. So if you will, please, I'd appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. Yeah, it's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the California Rodeo Association to honor the Salinas Valley Charros group. They have been an integral part of our production and our show over the years, participating in our parade and our grand entry. And it's a delight for us to be able to have Adán Senior and Adán Junior, part of our show and part of the heritage of Salinas. So the California Rodeo is proud of our relationship and excited that you're being honored here today and recognized for what you do for the community of Salinas and also for us, on behalf of us, the California Rodeo.
Oh, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Well, we look forward to many, many more years of working together.
For sure. Maybe now we're getting old, but we've got a new generation right behind us, like you see. You've got all these young boys, you know, keeping busy. So I think that's the idea to bring them in. So thank you for joining us, turning to be here and inviting us. And thank you for supporting the event, El Grito. And you've got more than walking to come, everybody, to join us. And it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you. And Mayor, the second half, as we celebrate El Grito this weekend, we're going to be having an awesome show of horses at East Alasal this coming Saturday. It'll be a parade. On Sunday, eight blocks will be closed on East Alasal for festivities, celebrating Mexican culture. And I'm going to invite Mayor, if we could just go outside, we're going to... There's Dolar out there. And we want to invite the president. We want to thank the president, Adán Gómez Junior, the president of El Grito. He's going to give us the invitation.
Thank you, Tony, for the nice introduction. Yeah, just to relay that, we're having it, the parade, on September, three o'clock. Everybody is invited. We're going to be passing through East Alasal and East Market, back to Vineyard Church. And then on Saturday, we'll be attending from noon time to 6:00 PM. Everybody is invited. It's a free, it's on Sunday, free event to the community. You know, we're going to have live music, lucha libre. Yeah, it'll be lots of fun. So I invite everybody to come out. Got some invitations here. Actually, Alexis, maybe you want...
Thank you, Adán. And Mayor, we made tradición por siempre, which is tradition forever. You're going to see the young, the new tradition. They're in their horses right outside. And you're going to meet Dolar, which is Dollar the Bull. So why don't we step outside and just do a quick...
Yeah.
Yes, let's go. Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
All right, all right, come here.
Order here. National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And is Jacob's Heart here? How are you?
Good to... Hi there. My name's Jose Castillo. And on behalf of the Jacob's Heart Children Cancer Report Services Organization, I'd like to thank you for this honor. And it's an amazing organization doing some amazing things for the children in our area.
Okay, terrific.
My name is Hava Alaska. I also just want to say thank you to the City of Salinas for proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This shows great support to all of our families who are currently in treatment, remission, and all our bereaved families who have lost a kid.
Good. Well, let me, before we give you the plaque, just give a couple of the whereases and then we'll ask you to come up. Whereas the character of our community is revealed in how we treat our most vulnerable. And where each year, nineteen point two in every one hundred thousand children in our community will be diagnosed with cancer. And whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease amongst children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined. And where Jacob's Heart has been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed, and emotionally supported by steadfastly adhering to the following commitments. Parents of children with cancer and other serious illnesses will be relieved of financial fears and able to focus attention on their children. No child undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. And families of seriously ill children will not experience food insecurity. And no seriously ill child in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of lack of transportation. And then I'll skip a few whereases. Whereas it is important for all Salinas City residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor our children whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dennis Donahue, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, hereby declare September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Salinas and do hereby honor Jacob's Heart's Children's Cancer Support Services for outstanding support to our community and acknowledge the organization's contributions to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, dated the ninth day of September 25. So thank you for your big work. You need to come to the middle. We're going to hand you a proclamation and we're going to take photos. Well, or hang on. I guess this one got me so excited, I wanted to do it right away, but we need to do one more. So hang tight. The, well, you know, it's just kind of an unusual City of Champions. It's not, you know, not the normal flow, but that's okay. So hang in there. And we're going to do Library Card Sign Up Month. And then we'll come, we'll get everyone up for photos. So hang tight. And I am looking, Timothy, are you here from the... There you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members.
Why don't you talk a little bit about National Library Card Sign Up Month? And then we'll do a proclamation and recognize the library.
Yes, September is National Library Card Sign Up Month across the country. And I just want to take this opportunity to encourage everybody to visit one of our three great libraries in the City of Salinas and to get a library card. The libraries are an amazing resource for this community. Our staff members are absolutely in love with helping our community, helping everybody through their literacy journey. And most importantly, a library card is free. And the Salinas Public Libraries are a free resource to all of the residents here in Salinas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that... And library cards have a positive history in this community. Our library system's done a great job over the years. Whereas libraries play a crucial role in the education and development of children, from storytimes for preschoolers to college and career planning for high schoolers, while fostering literacy and a love of reading. And whereas libraries provide welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another, strengthening the social fabric of our community. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the population they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And I'll just jump down to whereas a library card sparks creativity and empowers all people to explore new passions and interests and pursue a path of lifelong learning. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dennis Donahue, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, hereby proclaim September as Library Card Sign Up Month and encourage everyone to visit their local Salinas Public Library to sign up for their own library card and explore this valuable community resource, also dated this ninth day of September 2025. So thank you, Timothy.
Thank you.
Let's take some pictures and then we'll get down to business.
I have more.
I don't have them in front of you.
I have...
Gloria's doing it. Okay, very good. The notes are, I need better notes. Okay, Gloria.
Okay. The month of September is recognized as National Recovery Month. It's to celebrate all people that make the journey of recovery possible. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, more than eighty thousand American lives were lost to drug overdose in 2024. And whereas through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders. And whereas we must encourage relatives, friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas prevention of mental and substance abuse disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area around the nation. And I want to say, never lose hope. Never lose hope. And I want to say, I want to thank Sun Street Centers, CHS, Community Human Services, Valley Health, all these services that Dr. Claus that's working and doing all this fentanyl education prevention throughout our county. We want to thank you for all the hard work that you have done in our community and continue to do. And without our recovery centers, guess what? It'd be, yeah, it would be really sad if we didn't have these recovery centers, right? So Eddie, I want to recognize you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And to all the consulars that are here from Valley Health, please stand up so we can recognize you. Consulars, anyone that came from a recovery center. Thank you. Thank you so much. So I have some certificates for Sun Street Center, I believe, and Valley Health, Community Human Services. So Mayor, whenever you're ready to take pictures and we can hand them out.
Okay, now we do pictures?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Let's see. We'll go in the order we started. Jacob's Heart first up, then libraries.
Oh, perfect.
At all. All right, libraries, you're up next.
Sun Tree, come on, say, come on.
Everyone.
Come on, it's all of them.
Everyone?
Yeah, all of you. All of you. Residents. Thank you for being here. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we are going to go into closed session. We will return at five. Do I have any public comment on closed session? We do not. Any Zoom comments? All right, no hands up. All right. We will be back about five o'clock. All right, we will get started again. We have nothing to report out from closed session. And before we do a public comment, if there are any new employees or somebody to welcome, have at it. Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, council members. Thank you, Chief Carlos Acosta. We do have some exciting news. We, in the month of August, we have four new police recruits that graduated from the police academy and transitioned to the police officer position. That's Officer Sonia DeSantos, Officer Samantha Lucero, Officer Francisco Perez, and Officer Elian Sanchez. We also had some exciting promotions and lateral movement within the organization, probably the largest lateral movement and promotion that the organization has seen in the last year and a half. I did mention Assistant Chief Bravo. That took effect in July. Commander Kendall Gray, Sergeant Alejandro Zamora, and Robert Zuniga. And the latest hire was Management Analyst Victoria Ramon. So exciting news. Welcome to the staff and the promotions. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Anyone else? There is.
Good afternoon, Celine Andrews, Finance Director. I'm ecstatic to introduce Joshua Label. He is here in the audience today. He is our new accountant auditor. He worked here as a temp a few months back, maybe a year back. Went on to CS UMB and worked there for a little bit. Also has prior auditing experience. Very excited. He does have an accounting background and undergraduate degree from CS UMB as well. So very excited to welcome him.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? David.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm here to report on one promotion in Public Works Department. Vincent Davi has moved up into a Public Service Maintenance Worker Two, and he's in the Sanitary Sewer Division. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Okay, anyone else? Okay, that is it. All right, we will proceed to public comment. We will be on ninety seconds for this evening's agenda. And public comment is now open for business. And it's just all items not on the agenda. And I know some of you are here for agenda items, so you will have your turn.
Good after eve, everyone. My name is Kimberly Bryant, and I am here to pray for the City Council, the City of Salinas, Mayor, City Attorney, City Manager, Council Members, City Staff, Police, and the Fire Department. It is the Lord's Prayer. Pray along with me if you know it. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not against, into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen. The Lord bless you and keep you, make his face shine upon you, and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Thank you. Amen.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Jose, I'm on to be a community. Mayor, we need to get the two minutes back on board. I think it's only fair. I mean, try to consider it. You know, I have some of your council members up there babbling all day long about stuff that has nothing to do with what we're talking about sometimes, and it keeps going. And we pull up reports that make no sense in Salinas. I mean, we're a whole different city. We're not a big city like most cities. So I believe if you give us back our time, I'd appreciate that. And I think it's wrong for you to take it away from us to begin with. I mean, you know, First Amendment to rights, freedom of speech, you should honor that at a minimum. And if we're going to fly flags out there, guys, you know, whatever flag you want to fly, for everybody that has a celebration that month, you know, Mexican independence, the Philippines, whoever, put their flag up. If you're going to put everything else up there, be fair and put everybody else's flag up there. Make it equal for everybody. That's what you guys are fighting for, right? Equality? That's what the LGBTQ flag is, right? Equality? Yeah, let's do that, please, for everybody else. And then once again, our parks, Ms. Linquist, if you're here, please water our parks and please lock them. They were open again last night late. And, you know, you get paid good money to do that. You guys do a... You were there, Mr. Donahue. You took the field trip with us. We haven't got our streetlights yet. Mr. Jacobs, if he's here, come on, it's not that hard to put streetlights up. Come on, guys, do your job, please. Do your job. We're going to hold you accountable. Have a great day. God bless you all.
Hello, good evening. My name is Fernando Galindo, and I am the Monterey County Housing Counselor for Echo Housing. My primary responsibility is to educate both tenants and property owners in Salinas and Monterey County about their rights and responsibilities with the goal of helping people stay housed and prevent homelessness. I'm excited to offer and promote Echo's services in each City Council member's respective district. Echo Housing is contracted with the City of Salinas to provide fair housing and tenant rights workshops to this community. We aim to bring a workshop to every City Council district, increasing awareness of the resources available to both tenants and property owners and demonstrating that the City of Salinas and Echo Housing are united in providing these resources. On October 30th, from 5:30 to 7:00, in Councilmember Dalarosa's district, a community meeting will be held at the Filipino Community of Salinas Building. And additionally, we are finalizing the details for a workshop in District Five, Councilmember Sandoval's district, for a community meeting on October 2nd, 2025, at North Salinas High School Library from 6:00 to 7:30. Echo is also in discussions with Councilmember Salazar regarding a workshop in his district. We want to ensure that Echo Housing's presence is felt throughout Salinas. We are also pleased to announce that we have partnered with the United Way Financial Empowerment Program, which enables us to... We'll be there three to four times a week.
Thank you.
But thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Freeman, a longtime, longtime person here in North Salinas. Today, I'd like to formally apologize to Councilmember Tony Barrera for what I stated at the last City Council meeting. I got the wrong information about a situation, about a family here in Salinas. And going forward, Councilmember Barrera, if I hear something concerning you, I will discuss it with you. I'll call you and meet with you to discuss the reality of what's happened. And again, I apologize for what I said. I got the wrong information, and I ran with it. I should have consulted you before I came here to blast you at the last City Council meeting, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
My name is James Michael Bollinger, and I appreciate this opportunity to have my little say here. And I'll try not to use whereas at all. So we have a housing crisis of not enough housing. We must increase the supply of housing. Instead, the City of Salinas has chosen to penalize and severely compromise the ownership rights of landlords. I'm not a landlord. This is on behalf of my father. This is unfair to landlords that have acquired their property.
I'll give you your time back, but this, I think this pertains to the conversation we're going to have a little later.
I'm sorry, then.
No, that's all right. That's all right.
This is not for the rent control?
This is not it.
Sorry, my bad.
Hang tight. No, that's all right. There is no harm, no foul. But tea time for that is six o'clock, so... Hold your powder.
Buenas tardes, señores encargados of the Salinas. Yo quiero traerles esta foto para que la vean ustedes. Y tengo una acción en esta calle que está por diecisiete años. Tengo en el área esa yo diecisiete años. Y está así, por diecisiete años. No ha habido un cambio. Es tierra ahí, no es banqueta, pero pertenece a la Ciudad de Salinas. Para que la mire cada uno de ustedes, y si pueden tomar una acción ahí, por favor, porque se mira terrible. Está feo ahí, parece de cierto. O si nos dan a nosotros, ahí está la barra que nos divide en la Costa Plaza y esta calle que se llama Lagui. Si nos dan el permiso de ponernos en la orilla de esa mobile, la barra, y darnos esa parte de terreno, y nos movemos. Nos regalan esa parte de tierra si no quieren limpiarla. Pero con documentos, para que sea legal. Diecisiete años tiene así. No sé qué van a hacer, es su trabajo. Está la evidencia. Pueden mirarla cada uno de ustedes. Se la traje especialmente para ustedes, para que la vean. Se la puede dar ahí, es para que la vean. Aquí la dejo.
Good afternoon, City Council Mayor. I'm here because I want to show you this picture. And this picture has, this has been this way for seventeen years. And I'm showing you this picture so we can please take action. It's been like this for seventeen years. It has not changed. As you can see, it's just dirt. There's no sidewalks. There's no street. It looks terrible. It looks like a desert. And it's been like that for seventeen years. So if you allow us, this is close to Costa Plaza. And if you give us permission to move this, we can move that. And you can maybe give us part of the land. But it's been seventeen years, and nothing has changed. So I'm showing you this picture, so if you can please take action.
Thank you. Thank you.
Karen Cameron, Concerned Salinas resident. Recently, I've been signed up to Spray Day's notifications, and I received 28 notifications last month alone that toxic restricted pesticides are being applied within one mile of my home. I was recently interviewed by Inside Climate News. She ran data on my home and found that during the years of 2018 to 2022, 108,000 pounds of either chloropericurin or telone 13D was applied within one mile of my home. And I know, Mayor Donahue, you're concerned because you live nearby and you're in the same databank. Something has to be done. There were monarchs that died in front of the Pacific Grove Sanctuary crying with up to seven different pesticides on them. So I behoove you, this is not just a salad bowl of the world problem. It's a countywide problem now. And I look forward to things in future that will change this. We just have to do something. I mean, since I've moved here, I've become allergic to formaldehyde. I've had surgery for chronic sinusitis. I know this is, I believe, childhood cancer awareness month. The two chemicals that I mentioned that are 108,000 pounds nearby me and nearby our schools here have been banned in 40 to 50 countries in Europe for causing cancer, yet we allow them here. Now, I know this is not within your jurisdiction, but CDPR. I ask you to scream to them that we need an air monitor in this salad bowl of the world, please.
Thank you.
And good evening. My name is Sergeant Shepherd. I'm connected with the United States Army. And I have been down to the city hall, and I've resided here in this area for quite some time. But I think someone needs to do something about this parking issue. You know, numerous times I've had to call the parking area and call the police. And I can't ignore these red zone violations where people are parking on the wrong side of the roads, double parking. You can't even walk down the sidewalks, and people having to go around. And even over there on Rico, that's what made me go down to the city hall when I saw on Rico where it states parking, no parking. No parking for, it's a bike lane. No parking for cars and motor vehicles. And all up and down those streets, that's all you see is cars there. I can count the number of them there. But this red zone violation, you wouldn't believe the number of times that I've had to call and report this issue. And like I told them, even when I'm out just taking a walk, I can't ignore it. But God is looking in his book, and he said, when you disobey, you should be made to pay. So how can they get by with these issues?
Hello. My name is McGregor Eddy. I've lived in Salinas for exactly 50 years. And I am here to ask that next Martin Luther King Day, which is not that far, October, November, January, that instead of just having a ceremony, that the city sponsor a workshop on the nonviolent organizing principles of Dr. Martin Luther King. Because I think both the city council and the people who come before it would benefit from learning from the successful nonviolent hero of all of us. For Dr. Martin Luther King, it would be a small amount of money to have someone from the Kingian Center. One of the principles of Dr. King is we must have nonviolence in our hearts, not just in our actions. And one of them is you oppose the evil, not the doer, which means not personal attacks, but the problem. And to focus on people's needs, so that the people of Salinas know that you care about their needs. And the people of Salinas will have a chance to communicate nonviolently. And using this opportunity, I volunteer to help support it, and be both for the community and the city council and the city staff, maybe even the police. Study the principles of our Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. nonviolent...
City council members, manager, mayor, Mr. Callahan. Back in the years, 2014, 15, 16, 17, 18, there was a lot of activity going on in the city. City working with the people, and a lot of changes were being done. I mean, you can see, go back and look at the records and all that. And people were feeling that they were part of the solution. They were willing to work, cooperate. Now, things have turned around. People don't want to cooperate because the city, they feel that they're shutting the doors to them. Changes need to be done, all of you, okay? Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Ignacio Fragoso. Tony Barrera, looking sharp. I just wanted to say that I was recently on Old Stage Road, and that road's horrible. And unfortunately, there's a lot of drunk drivers that drive through there at nighttime. And that road being that, you know, bad, it's very dangerous. So I just wanted to, you know, let you guys know about that. I know our Public Works Department works really hard, and there's a certain way in how they, you know, they go at it in terms of infrastructure and fixing roads. But I feel it was very important for me to come and say that. And especially because we're so heavily taxed, you know. We brag about a balanced budget, but, you know, we have a balanced budget with tax measures in place. So, I mean, I feel like we need more people here advocating for that. You know, we have a higher tax rate than the national average. We have a higher crime rate than the national average. We have a higher unemployment rate than the national average. So I think all those issues and all those factors come into place with things like that. So I just wanted to here and, I just wanted to be here and tell you guys about that. And I thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Good evening, city council and mayor, attorney, finance person. My name's Judy Myers, and I'm here tonight for this first speech or talk about council members speaking only English during a meeting. On May, I believe it was the 13th, council member Sandoval spoke in Spanish for over three minutes. There was no interpreter. I called the city attorney and asked him about an interpretation of that. He was to get back to me, but he has not. So I don't think that council members should be allowed to speak any language other than English unless you have an interpreter available. Because I don't know what he said. He mentioned the former mayor. He mentioned Steve McShane, former council member, who we all know resigned. I don't know what he said about these people. He followed up with a three and a half minute, 315 second speech in English, but it was not the same speech because he did not mention the mayor or Mr. McShane. I've done a little research, and apparently there is nothing that says that this can't be done. But I don't think it's fair to people like me who are not Spanish speakers. I don't know what he said. And he's representing not only his district, but the entire city. So I just think that if that starts, mayor, you need to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the public?
Hello, Wes White, Salinas Monterey County Home Association. First, I guess I want to object to the 92nd rule on a whim. You know, there should be a standard. It used to be three minutes, then it went to two, and now you're just, ah, whenever I feel like it, I'm just gonna tie your hands behind your back. Now, let's go. I wanted to talk about March 2014, you know, the spring of 2014. There were five police brutality murders that had happened. And at that point, I was just on a bus, coming from the Naval Host Graduate School. And it changed my life, because not only a couple of months after that, I went to a school board meeting to argue about a principal being fired without cause, but, you know, as a free employee. And then a few months later, I come here. And I start watching you prick me for a nickel, prick me for a dime. The way you do business is not really about public service. Voting Rights Act was right about there, too. Joaquin Avila Cruz Reynoso, Juan Martinez, is the guy that got me introduced with a lot of that. Pause the Calls, Black Lives Matter. I also got Dread McCall, who was my really good buddy, and Pam Weston to help me come up with that target sniper logo that we got, which has a tent, a sleeping bag, and a shopping cart. As, you know, you're a perpetual target, and we are going to eat you alive every time we see you. And it's horrible. Man, we shouldn't be like that. We need to do better. Voices of Change, Karen Arahu, Gary Carnes.
Thank you.
Some real leaders.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? All right. Anyone on Zoom from the public? All right, we will go ahead and close public comment and proceed to the city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. So do any members of the council have any campaign contributions to disclose related to any item on today's agenda? Council member Barajas?
No.
Council member Barrera?
No.
Council member De Arigo?
No.
Council member De La Rosa?
No.
Council member Salazar?
City attorney, just want to ask on agenda item 25343 regarding the Sherwood Recreation Center and 25304 regarding the first substantial amendment to HUD. I recently learned I have a brother-in-law who works for one of the construction companies, and believe that would be in the best interest to recuse myself.
Thank you, council member. When we get to each of those items, we'll ask that you make that statement and then leave the rotunda. Those are not Levine Act conflicts. Those are different conflicts. And so we'll address those when each of those two items come up. But thank you for that. Council member Sandoval?
No.
Council member, excuse me, Mayor Donahue.
No. All right. With that, we will proceed to the consideration items. And Mohammed, we are waiting for you on this particular item.
And if I may, mayor, this is the point where council member Salazar would state that recusal and then leave the room.
Okay. Do you want him to restate it?
Yes, please.
Okay. At this time, I will be recusing myself. I have a brother-in-law that works for one of the construction companies. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Aurelio?
All right. As soon as he's...
Good afternoon.
Yeah, we'll wait till he's out of the room.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members.
Hold on just a sec. We need to let Aurelio take his leave. Hey, we're good.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney. The item before you tonight is consideration for approving the plans and specifications and award of the contract for the Sherwood Recreation Center Building Improvements project. It's important to note that the team members involved in this project are from Public Works, Library and Community Services, Community Development, Finance, and the Legal Department. We, on June 4th, we issued an invitation for bid for the project. On July 15, we received three proposals. Auto Construction submitted the apparent lowest bid, which was approximately $88,000 below the engineer's estimate, and approximately $180,000 below the second bidder. On July 18, we received concerns about one of their subcontractors. We looked into it about the violations, and the violations were rectified. We evaluated the bids in accordance with the city municipal code and also the California Public Contract Code, which both state that the city is required to award their contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Auto Construction was the apparent lowest bid. They were very responsive. They responded fully to the invitation for bid. And then also, we looked into their responsibility. We checked the contractors license board licenses. There were no issues. The Department of Industrial Relations registrations for all contractors and subcontractors, there were no issues. The Labor Commissioners Division of Labor Standards Enforcement Department list, neither B&amp;M nor Auto are not debaired, and they're not suspended. We contacted various agencies, the references, and there were no issues. Therefore, we are not aware of any information that Auto Construction is not a responsible bidder. Therefore, we recommend awarding the apparent lowest responsive and responsible bidder Auto Construction in the amount not to exceed $2,686,900. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right. Andrew, I'll start to my right. Andrew, any questions?
Sure. So is the term lowest responsible bidder, the fact that there's been consistent violations for them, as long as they cure them, that classifies them as a responsible bidder? Or is that something that is subjective?
Yeah. The definition of responsible bidder is a qualified contractor that's gonna deliver the project successfully, and that's Auto Construction. When there are violations and they're rectified, and they're off, they're not on the list. I have 10 pages of lists of contractors. They can't even bid projects. And they're not one of those.
And so there's no amount of, for example, I know one of the concerns was wage theft, right? The report cases of wage theft. So there's no specific amount, if it happened one, five, or 10 times a wage theft, that will not disqualify them as being a responsible bidder?
Well, that's the Department of Industrial Relations. They publish the list, and it's based, as you indicated, based on the violations. And they're not on the list. And sometimes they debaugh contractors for one year, depending on the magnitude of violation. Sometimes it's three years.
Okay, I saw that in the staff...
Yeah, let me jump in here for a second, council member. So the question that's presented to you is whether Auto Construction, Inc. is a responsible bidder. And some of the information that you've received is indicating that because there have been issues with one of their subcontractors in the past on other projects, that therefore that somehow makes Auto Construction not a responsible bidder. And so I refer you to the criteria that are in Section 12-23 of the municipal code. There are five criteria there by which the Public Works staff determines whether or not a bid that they've received, after they determine it's responsive, is responsible. So those are the extent to which the offer meets the requirements and specifications of the city, the long-term and short-term costs to the city, including maintenance, impact on operational efficiency, which includes delivery requirements, reliability of the suppliers to provide and warranty the items procured, and the financial stability of the bidder. We have received the information from the labor groups that there are some questions about a subcontractor, but there is nothing in the record to indicate that Auto Construction fails to meet any of these five criteria, in our opinion.
I understand. In the staff report, I think Auto said that they would monitor these compliance issues. And what, how does monitor occur? I mean, as far as wage theft, what kind of monitoring is there? Or we do have a labor compliance specialist you mentioned?
Yes. Both the city and the state monitor labor compliance. From the get-go on the project, we cover labor compliance. And monthly, when the contractor submit for payment, there's required to submit the certified payrolls. Otherwise, we won't pay.
Okay. There's also a mention about local hires. I know they have to make a good effort. But what does that mean, make a good effort to get local hires?
So a part of the bid contract documents is each of the prime contractors needs to provide evidence that they took certain steps in order to identify local hires. That's standard in our Public Works contracts. As far as I'm aware, they provided that documentation. It was reviewed by the Public Works staff to be consistent with those obligations. But I also want to point out, this is a federally funded project, right? So to the extent that any local preferences or any local purchasing preferences exist in your municipal code, they're irrelevant because it's a federally funded project, and those criteria restrict us from applying those to this project.
Those are all my questions. Yeah, thank you. Tony?
And Mr. Callahan, to that point, because it is a federally funded project, are you saying that this construction company is not required to hire at least 50% of local?
That's correct, council member.
So, so being that we're a local government, is there anything that we can have a say-so in that? Because, and let me tell you what, because we're always saying we want to hire local. So whether the federal government is stating something, is there something in the clause and the ordinance that local government can have a say-so in, in supporting... the clause and the ordinance that local government can have a say-so in, in supporting local hire?
Not with respect to federal funding, Councilmember.
Mr. Mohammed, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Mohammed, I know that when there was a question regarding Auto Construction, we did receive a letter from them, also regarding that the, there was a union that sent us a lengthy letter, which I'm sure your staff read. Did you, did anybody in your staff respond back to the union's concerns? Just like, just like we responded, just like we had a relationship and conversation with Auto Construction, they sent us a letter because we had concerns. Being that the union had concerns as well, did somebody from city government here respond back to their concerns?
No, they did not submit the letter to us. They submitted it to the council. We looked into it. The concerns were about a subcontractor, not a, not about Auto. We met with the contractor. We let them know about the concerns, and they gave us a letter stating that they're going to ensure labor compliance, and they're going to enforce it throughout the whole project.
Yes. Mr. Callahan, regarding that there are concerns, and you know what, and I don't know all the details, but I ask questions when they're brought to this table concerning, and I'm new at this, certified payroll. Is local government here, are we allowed, being that there are concerns regarding the subcontractor, are we allowed to find out if they are really a legit organization, or because we're contracting with Auto Construction, do we have any say-so in that?
So they're good questions, Councilmember. You do have the ability to ask those questions. You asked those questions of your staff. Your staff did their investigation, their due diligence, reached out to the other agencies, and have determined that there were no consequences as a result of those previous violations, right?
Right.
We did do that, Mr. Mohammed?
Yes, we looked into the violations and they were rectified. They paid the fines. And if they were not rectified, I mean, I don't know, Department of Industrial Relations, they may have listed them if they were not rectified. Can't say for sure.
Yeah, so you know, sometimes I've heard staff, when we contract out, we got a construction company, if something goes wrong hypothetically here, who's ultimately responsible to answer those types of questions? I mean, if something's either illegal or unethical, being that we're responsible for this contract, are we ultimately responsible for that?
We enforce the contract requirements, all contract requirements.
But Councilmember, it would be the obligation of the prime contractor to ensure that all of those labor compliance requirements are met.
Yeah. Mr. Mohammed, I know we're looking at a little bit more than $2.5 million here. A lot of money there. Do you know, sir, how much we've already spent on this building, on this project?
I don't have the answer to that.
We getting ready to spend?
We would, we would have spent money on the design of the project, so we don't have the exact number, but usually it's around 10%, so somewhere around $200,000. We spent to date on the design of the project and going out to bid.
Well, maybe I didn't say it correctly, Mr. Jacobs. I guess since we started working on that building, this is an additional 2.5 plus.
So if you want to go back in history?
Well, no, I don't want to go back in history. I'm talking about money here, so if that's an inappropriate question, but it seems like, and I say this jokingly, but I've been told, telling the city manager, this building has been like a career. I mean, so we're continuing spending money, Mr. Jacobs, and just to be fair here, do you think this is the last amount of money that we're going to be spending on this building?
I sure hope so. I know we've been working on this project since 2015, so if we go back in terms of how much money we spent to date on that project, we're in the $8 to $10 million for the building. And this is supposed to be the last phase of the project, which deals with the ADA compliant issues, the roof issues, and the windows issues that were pointed out when we finished Phase 3. And those issues were actually put aside to fit within the budgeting of the original phases. So now that we have this final bit of money, we're hoping it takes care of everything and finishes off the building, and we'll be opening it up once this contract is done.
Yeah. So one last question, Mr. Callahan. I'm having a difficult time trying to absorb this. You're saying we do have a local ordinance to hire 50% of, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing that we can leverage to be able to tell these construction folks, could you consider local hire?
Let me answer that, if I can. If we were using our own funding source, or a different funding source that did not have the requirement, yes. It's the funding sources driving what we can and can't do as it pertains to our local ordinance. So to finish the project, we're trying to use CDPG funding to finish the project, which prevents us from using our local, enforcing our local requirement or requesting our local requirement. If that's uncomfortable for this council, then I have to go back to the drawing board and try to figure out another funding source for this project to see how we can get it done. And which is, that's, you have the policy call when it comes to that. But because we're using this funding source, we can't, because if we enforce it and use this funding source, we're going to probably have to pay the money back and do other things because we shouldn't. So that's just what's driving this. So I get the, I get the uneasiness and the fact, but it's the funding source that's driving what we can and can't do as it pertains to your question.
So I just saw something in this report, Mr. Mendez. If we don't go with this contract with Auto Construction, are we liable for anything? Did I understand that? No?
So a couple of things, Councilmember. You have options. Your option would be to, you can reject all bids and restart the process, right? If there's a level of discomfort with what you've heard and what, you know, our responses here, questions are, you can just reject all bids without a reason and restart the process. That provision in your staff report, which says that there could be a potential liability, is if you improperly determine them to be not responsible, you're responsible for their costs, not necessarily for the cost of the project, but for the cost for them to submit their proposal.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
You're welcome.
Mayor? Mr. Mohammed, in the staff report, city staff, quote, "City staff notified the prime contractor Auto Construction of B&amp;M's violations. Auto Construction provided the city with a letter ensuring that Auto Construction will oversee B&amp;M and enforce labor compliance and safety requirements throughout the project," end quote. How robust is the legal framework for a general contractor to actually oversee and execute that labor enforcement of their subcontractors?
I mean, they are required to enforce all the contract requirements, including the labor compliance.
Yeah, so there is a division of labor that oversees the contracts. We have a labor compliance officer that oversees the contracts, and as a prime, they also actually have to oversee the project. So our labor compliance officer receives monthly statements from the prime and the subs, and they review those to make sure that they're paying the proper wage rates. And if they're not, then we, then we have a finding against them. If they don't submit the proper paperwork to us on a monthly basis, we have options to withhold payment on those, those items that we don't receive. And we do this on a constant basis with a lot of the projects going on. And we actually will hold payment if they don't comply with the contract code in terms of labor. We will withhold that amount and then a penalty as well, and we'll hold that to the side until those issues are completed. And if they're not completed, they don't, they don't get paid.
When we reached out to other jurisdictions that had contracted with Auto Construction, did we happen to reach out to the city of Gonzalez?
I don't have the list with me, but the assistant engineer did reach out to all the ones that were listed there.
Okay. The reason I bring that up is because the city of Gonzalez, Auto Construction's Gonzalez Community Project is currently subject to a lawful picket by operating engineers local 12 in an area standards action against a foreign subcontractor with prior wage violations. So given that Auto Construction essentially, functionally provided the exact same promise, roughly the exact same language and writing to the city of Salinas, yet this is going on in our neighboring jurisdiction, the city of Gonzalez, what additional promises has Auto made or commitments to, that will make this project any different in terms of labor compliance than what they're already failing to do in the city of Gonzalez?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have that information with me, but be happy to look into it.
Besides the letter that Auto provided and their commitment to enforcing labor standards and labor law, is there anything else that the city can require or ask of Auto to go above and beyond just a promise on paper?
Well, you have, you have the actual contract that we would enforce. So that's not, so there's the contract for, that requires Auto, that provides the city all the sort of the legal requirements. If you want us to do other things, and we're going, and then I'm going to recommend, you know, maybe pursue the option, just to tell us to restart this project and deal with it. Because right now, it'd be hard to bring something new to the table that we didn't already require. So that might, so that would be my at that point. If you're uncomfortable, like our city attorney said, then I think the best course is just tell us to restart the project.
I'll do a question. In the staff report, we note that staff looked at CSLB and DIR registration. That's one of the primary means for verifying that the contractor and/or subs were in good standing, correct?
Right.
Okay. How accurate would a business, or in this case, a contractor or subcontractor being listed on CSLB or DIR, what, that their permit or their license is still active? How accurate is that in terms of a measurement of that contractor or subcontractor's work and an aggressive history in terms of compliance with all labor laws and codes?
That is just one of the checks, and they update that regularly. And that's the information that, that we get from the Department of Industrial Relations. You know, that's only one of the checks.
Okay. Well, that was one of the primary ones that was cited, and the reason I bring that up is because just historically speaking, just using CSLB or DIR listings doesn't necessarily mean that that contractor is in good standing, per se. An example of that would be Melgar Mechanical Incorporated, CSLB number 1073416, which has faced over $500,000 in DLSC wage adjustments this year alone to date, and criminal charges related to insurance fraud. But nonetheless, it still holds a CSLB license and continues to perform public work, right? So I would argue that that's not necessarily, just, just because we check that box doesn't necessarily mean that that contractor's doing good work and in good faith.
Before you respond, staff, and I'll take that on, staff is going to do the best they can. We do not have the ability to quadruple-check other listings and resources that we have. So like our engineer said, that's just one of the factors that we look at. Again, if what we've done makes the council uncomfortable, then I think the recommendation that we, you know, the suggestion might be just to tell us to restart it again. Because we don't have the ability to quadruple-check all the resource. I think the same thing would apply with the information we received. If you want us to completely quadruple-check, then we never get a project to bid. I mean, we, we would struggle to get these projects done more than we already have. Like Councilmember Barrera said, you know, this is a lifeline project. So I just think there's, we need to really consider our capacity and our ability to do our work. We have professional staff, city, that are looking at all the resources that are available. If what we present is not sufficient, then either tell us to do or tell us to restart the process. We might have the similar outcome, but tell us to restart the process. I mean, I'm just, that's just kind of being, you know, fair for our staff. Because this is just one of many projects that they're working on.
I just want to clarify, the, this is only one of the checks. They have to be licensed, that's one check. They have to be registered. We also check the labor commissioners, who's appointed by the government, their division of enforcement, and that's the list that's for debaired or suspended contractors.
Thank you for that, and well-received city manager. Just one follow-up question. In terms of if the direction of the council tonight would be to reject all bids and call for the project to rebid, would we be, would we still, I mean, one of the follow-up items is one of the amendments to one of our federal plans. Would putting this project out to rebidding impact our ability to be in compliance with our spend ratio for that CDPG funding, or would it kind of put us in a tight position to meet that compliance?
So I don't know if this is around. I think it's going to, we're going to have to really be on point and get, get on this. So I'm not going to say that it, we might not be able to meet it. We're just going to have to, the quicker we can get sort of the next direction, then we can move on it. So it will be something that we will prioritize to make sure we get it done. You know, it might be a little tight, but we'll get it done. I don't know if, so we'll go down that path.
That's all my questions. Thank you. Gloria?
Yes, thank you for the report. Okay, just refresh my memory again, and also for the public that's here. This contractor, Mr. Auto, he had violations, right?
No.
In the past.
No, we did not receive violations of Auto, a subcontractor, the HVAC subcontractor, which is less than 1% of the project cost, had violations, labor compliance violations, and they rectified those violations.
Okay. Well, all right. And question, do, would you happen to know, or maybe Mr. Jacobs said, in this job, this particular job, how many employees is it going to take to work on this project? Give me a rough estimate.
Probably 20.
20?
Yeah.
So that would be, I'm just throwing this out there. That would be 20 local residents that this subcontractor may not contract with or give them the opportunity.
Again, there's no, there's no requirement to hire locally when we use federal funds. And these are federal funds, so we take the lowest responsible bidder. And you have to not think about the local hire preferences, because those are local ordinances that don't apply when we have federal funds.
Well, I have a problem with that, not hiring local.
Well, then you can refuse the federal funds and try to find another funding source that we can use.
Well, maybe, maybe not. Okay, so I ask my questions, and I'll hold my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Margaret?
Okay, well, I'm, I'm agreeing with a lot of the questions that have been asked by our colleagues. I think you guys have done a really good job of analyzing the data. And I think, you know, we, most of us do feel a little bit uncomfortable, even though the CDPGB doesn't care about local, I think as a city we do. And so that's where I have a little bit of a hard time with it. And I personally am willing to postpone the project if we can expedite it, like you said, Renee, to prioritize it and go to a rebid process. So I'm willing to take that risk in hopes that we can come up with some, a better solution going forward that, that all of us can get behind and support.
All right. Okay, thank you. With that, we will go out for public comment. And we, 90 seconds, and we will, we will pause in between, if we don't get finished, because it's, we're scheduled at 6 o'clock to talk about the rental issue. So with that?
How you doing? My name is Danny Rubio. I'm with the Shebena Local 104 here in this area, long. I've lived there, Salinas, my whole life. And let's get this straight. There's no way a general contractor can actually verify the G, the subcontractor is paying the right amount, because on the CSLB, anybody can put down, yes, I paid this guy this much, that much. But until you talk to the worker, that's where you know if you got wage theft or not. And most of the time, I see this a lot, because I do compliance in this area, Monterey County, Santa Cruz County. A lot of these workers, Spanish speakers, afraid to come forward, because they're just happy to have a job right now. And in this environment, and what's going on right now, they're not going to come forward. So to say for, for a general contractor... So, to say, for, for a general contractor to say that he's gonna hold his subs, you know, liable or, or keep an eye on them, like I said, anybody could put it on the CSLB, whatever they want, online, hey, this is how much I paid, submit it to the California for certified payroll. But until you actually talk to the workers, like I do, I talk to them when I go to job sites, that's when you know you got wage stuff. Okay, I got 20 seconds left. I got two brothers right now that I'm working with, not my brothers, but two guys, I used to work for B&amp;B Builders, and they have still yet to receive all their money from last year at a project at Monterey Peninsula College. So, for Auto to say that they're gonna keep an eye on them, that's false.
Thank you. Next.
All right, Jose Garay, Montevia Community, I, I really don't like how you guys are approaching this project at, oh, we don't have to use local people. I mean, come on, you live here, how are you not gonna use local people? Don't you think that local people will, will actually compromise and, and actually make the job better, and actually might even take a pay cut to make it happen? Because you know you guys overinflate everything. I mean, $3,623,602, that'll be five to six million when you're done with this project. That's why it goes here in Salinas, that's why I've been seeing a pattern here. So, in my opinion, no. I mean, this gentleman should have all the copies of all the violations and documents in front of him. He should have that, that person that represents that here to respond to these questions. You have two people, Public Works and this gentleman I just met today, I don't even know who he is, Mohammed, Mr. Mohammed, nice to meet you. Not talking bad about you, just don't know who you are. And it's just, we need, we need proof of the compliance and everything. We need people to, to spend money locally here. This is where you live, people have to feed their families here. So by you guys letting this subdivision or, or transfer it out to some other subcontractor and this and that, that's, that's a bunch of baloney, I'm sorry. No, we're happy to make you a sandwich out of that, because that's not gonna work here. You know? This is Salinas, be proud of where you are, be proud of what you do, stand up for your people. Talk to each other, come on, guys. I said reject this, drop this project, do it all over again, get local people here to make money. Thank you. God bless.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Christopher Prowlis, and first and foremost, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to give us, express our feelings about this project. And I'm a second-generation sheetrock worker, I'm a third-year apprentice, and one thing I remember growing up as a child is my dad always working out of town. And he had the opportunity to work in town, he was able to work at the Alisa Hartnell campus, and every day I passed by, I live down the street from Barton Middle School, and I think of my father, how he had the opportunity to work right there. And it gave me the same example as my son, for him to, you know, pass by the Sherwood Hall Rec Center and to think about his, think about me, you know? Hey, my dad worked there, you know? And so I just wanted to say that not just me, but also my other brothers in the sheetrock who are well-trained, who are well-qualified, who have certifications, who give them that same opportunity to their children as I did, and them not to be able to have to travel and to be local. So, thank you guys for your time, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, City of Salinas Council.
No, not, not, I'm tempted to, but not a spectator's board.
Well, I'm B&amp;M. I was a third-generation union guy, I used to work 104 with these guys all the time. The unions have changed things. Now the union bosses work, and us 104 guys don't work. So when we get tired of that stuff, we go out and we start our own business. If you wanna talk about the wage violations that we've had, we've had wage violations for overpaying people. The union is all over me because I left the union and I started a great company. I set my alarm for 2:15 a.m. for the first three years, and I would get into the office at 3:00 in the morning and work from 3:00 to 3:00 to build a great company. There's no such thing as a, a great company without great people. And one of the things that unions destroy is they don't care about the companies, they only care about themselves and their little clique. But the problem is, is times have changed, and these unions are killing this state, they really are. And it takes us, union, union guys who see this and have to leave and go start something to understand this. There's nothing wrong with B&amp;M. If you talk to anyone that, any of my employees, they will tell you how, how great of a company we are. I am a person who hates money more than anything on the planet. I go to work and I set goals of what I want to accomplish. And my goal is to, to build a great company, a company that I would wanna work at one day, and that's exactly what we have done. My union buddies told me the union was bragging about this whole thing, and all my union buddies said, Dave, you should go up there and tell them the truth.
All right. Just let me get us, if, if there's not extensive additional public comment, we can finish up this and then come back to council for a vote. So how many more folks are gonna talk on this issue? Okay, great, then let's finish it up and get a conclusion for y'all.
Just to put common sense for the city, so if you guys look at Otto's proposal and look at second place, you should look at that wage difference or the proposal difference, your, your $80,000 difference. So, to go out to rebid, you probably will be spending more money than you would be as of right now. As Dave said, B&amp;M's a great company, we're less than 1% of the contract amount. So Otto is a great construction company, they build great products. I think you guys would be missing something if you didn't hire them to build your addition. I just wanna put that out there in layman's terms, as far as look at dollars for dollars, what you're getting, and as Mr. Mendez said, you're using federal funds. That's not your, I mean, it's money you can just, you know, use. So, keep that in mind. Other than that, thank you for your time, and yeah, thanks for reviewing it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, and I appreciate every single one of your comments tonight. I wanna be very clear, under the law and under your own city, responsibility is not limited to just the prime contractor. Labor Code 1103 makes it clear, contracts must be awarded to the lowest and responsible bidder. And that responsibility applies to subcontractors. And if subcontractors are irresponsible, the entire bid is irresponsible. Stating that they are not debarred by the state of California is not a measure of responsibility. Melgar Mechanical, working in the city of Santa Cruz, $500,000 imposed upon them on wage violations by the DSLE, has been indicted eight different times for insurance fraud, is currently working, currently still has their license. Also too, and the fact that when we state of, well, they're not on the debarred list, out of the 30,000 contractors that have contracting licenses in the state of California, only 55 have been debarred. With the DSLE, with a 50,000 case backlog on wage violation, it is a wild west when it comes to paying the local workforce. With violations of prevailing wage and apprenticeship utilization and commitments not to hire local, that means that both fail state and city code, even though this is a public project.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Let me just see if I've got anyone on Zoom. I do? Okay. David. David Vincent, you are.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, speak a little louder, please.
Okay, great. Good evening, members of the council. Even after the previous comments tonight, I urge you to carefully consider the history of B&amp;M Civil before awarding this contract. They have a documented history of wage theft and apprenticeship violation, which raises serious concerns about whether these public funds will be spent in accordance with the city's concern. The first speaker tonight, Mr. Mohammed, didn't distinguish between responsible bidders and a disbarred contractor. I will not attempt to do that in 90 seconds tonight. He mentioned the violations were, quote, "rectified," meaning that in the multiple instances in which the contractor was caught violating labor laws, it paid the required penalties. Contractor responsibility, even on, even with federal funding, does not stop with the prime contractor. The city's municipal code, even if superseded by federal law, makes it clear that responsibility includes reliability and capacity. It's hard to believe that a company with repeated violations, you know, can meet that standard. Even when a prime contractor promises oversight, that reality of enforcement is going to be limited. We've already seen that promises on paper do not guarantee compliance in the field. At its core, this decision tonight is about trust. Taxpayer dollars should not flow to contractors with a track record of cutting corners and failing workers. Awarding this project as recommended would not.
Okay, thank, okay, thank you, David. Okay. With that, we will go ahead and close public comment and come back to council for action.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to not accept staff's recommendation tonight with Auto Construction, and I would like to go out again and rebid.
I'll second that motion.
Suggestion clarification, council member, that means your motion is to reject all bids and to direct staff to rebid the project.
To reject all bids and go back.
Call for the question or additional comment?
If I might be able to make additional comments as well. All right. So, I just wanna take a moment to speak to the importance of this decision tonight, right? Our city code is pretty clear, under sections 12-21 and 12-23, we must award contracts to the lowest responsible bidder. And responsibility means more than just submitting a low number, it includes quality, reliability, and capacity to comply with the law. Here, one of the subcontractors, B&amp;M, has a history of wage theft and violations. Under city code, if a subcontractor is not responsible, the entire bid cannot be considered responsible. This alone is disqualifying. Now, I wanna be clear, oversight from the general contractor does not cure this. We've seen across California that promises to, quote, "monitor" subs do not prevent wage theft or violations. Our ordinances don't allow us to look the other way. At the end of the day, this is about public trust. Residents expect us to enforce our own ordinances and ensure taxpayer funds go to contractors who play by the rules. If we ignore clear violations, we weaken the integrity of our policies and erode trust in city government. And for these reasons, I cannot support awarding this contract as it stands.
Thank you. Anyone else? Andrew?
Yeah, I just, I think that this, this agenda item highlights the importance and difficulty with wage theft, which is a big issue. I think there's not enough conversations around wage theft and the inability for government agencies to monitor that. So I think I'm glad to see my colleague Gloria De La Rosa taking the lead on this, so happy to support the motion.
Tony?
Yes, and also I just want you to, I wanna thank everybody that was here. This is not an easy process, because as you, as you're looking at right now, our votes impact people's livelihoods at different levels, whether you agree with it or not. But I wanna thank you for being here, I really do. And one of the things that we, we hope to do is what's in the best interest of our residents here in Salinas. This project here has been taking many, many years and a lot of money. So we have to be diligent in making sure, and I, and I like what the report says way at the end, it's to serve seniors, youth, families. But hopefully, we'll be able to do that soon and, and doing the right thing. So I wanna thank all the workers here, I wanna thank the contractors out here, and hopefully, we can move on and, and do the right thing. Mr. Mohammed, I wanna thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
For your due diligence, and we're on the same team, we just have responsibilities and to make sure we're, we're trying to do the right thing. Thank you, sir.
All right. Patty, I think, I think we have a clear motion, and we can call for the question.
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar recused. Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. With that, we are going to jump to the consideration item, referendum against ordinance 2686. We'll, we'll allow for, well, we'll take a moment to allow for a set change. We'll do, we'll do a two or three-minute break, so. We will get back in business, and we are going to be looking for a report from the city clerk and the city attorney. So whichever, who's on first? Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'll go ahead and start with the report, and then I'll pass it on to our city attorney for any additional comments or anything that he would like to add to that. So as you may recall, at our last meeting on August 26, the city council approved a resolution accepting the certificate of signature verification related to the referendum against ordinance 2687, which we have been referring to as a repeal ordinance. The repeal ordinance and the for rent-related ordinance, ordinance 2663, which is the residential rental registration program, ordinance 2681, rent stabilization, ordinance 2682, tenant protection and just cause eviction, and ordinance 2683, the tenant, tenant anti-harassment ordinance. Just a brief summary from our last meeting. On July 3, the proponents of Protect Salinas Renters 2026 filed a referendum of the repeal ordinance. On that same day, my office and I, as the city clerk, determined that the raw count was in excess of the minimum number of signatures required, and accepted the referendum petition and transmitted the petition to the Monterey County Registrar of Voters. On August 15, the city clerk received and certified the Monterey County Registrar of Voters Certificate of Signature Verification, which indicated that the petition had qualified the sufficient number of signatures to qualify, to qualify and move on to the next phase. On August 26, which was our last council meeting, council approved said resolution accepting the certificate of signature verification. So for today's meeting, the city council is presented with the following options, which is, one, to repeal the repeal ordinance, or, two, submit the repeal ordinance to the voters either at the next regular municipal election occurring not less than 88 days after the order of the city council, or at a special election called for that same purpose, not less than 88 days after the order of the council at today's meeting. So with that said, the potential election dates that you, or before you are the general election date of November 3, 2026, special election date of June 2, 2026, April 16, 2026, which those two dates are called out on California Elections Code, or any other Tuesday, which would be considered a special election as well, but it would have to be within those 88 days, so any, anytime after December 6 of 2025. Cost for the election, as we have seen throughout the media and just commentary throughout this process, just to make sure that we're clear on those costs for a general election versus a special election, those costs are based on the total number of registered voters within the city of Salinas jurisdictional boundaries. As of the data posting of the agenda, the total number of registered voters for Salinas is 70,635. With that said, for a general election, costs can range from $7 to $10 per registered voter, totaling $494,445 to $706,350. That's for a general election. For a special election, we're looking at a range between $16 to $24 per registered voter, which puts us at $1,130,160 and $1,695,240. That concludes my portion of the report. I'll go ahead and pass it on to our city attorney.
Thank you, city clerk. I just want to provide a little bit more detail in terms of process for the council. So, first, should you tonight choose to repeal the re-ordinance, this would require you to introduce and to adopt an ordinance repealing the repeal ordinance. That's your staff report is a draft ordinance to that effect, it's been prepared and is ready for action. Should that be the direction the council wants to take this afternoon? As with all, almost all ordinances, it would not become effective until 30 days after its adoption. So we've received this question a few times, and I want to address it. It's, if the repeal ordinance never went into effect and the for rent-related ordinances remained in effect, why do we need to take action on the repeal ordinance? It's for two reasons. One, the election code requires you to take action on it, and two, the other option is available, and that's to put it before the voters. So, the repeal ordinance needed to stay alive, even though it was never effective, because it could be put to the voters, and the voters would determine whether or not it it could be put to the voters, and the voters would determine whether or not it becomes effective. So if you do decide to repeal the ordinance, repeal the repeal ordinance tonight, you could do so with the approval of all seven council members. So you could introduce it and adopt it tonight consistent with your charter, and it would become effective 30 days later. If you do not have unanimous consent on the repeal of the repeal ordinance, it'll be introduced tonight, and we'll bring it back at your next meeting for your consideration. So that's all I wanted to add in terms of the process. Hopefully, that clarifies it because we did receive a number of those questions. But your staff are available for any other questions you may have, council.
All right. Well, speaking of questions, we'll see if there's any, are any questions from the council. Andrew, I'll start with you.
Thank you. If this council decides to repeal the repeal, the city attorney, how long before the council can start to make changes to these ordinances?
The council can make changes to the ordinance, council member, at any point. What they can't do is bring back another repeal of those four ordinances. The elections code puts, and case law for that matter, puts a limit of 12 months. So the council could not bring another repeal ordinance forward within the next 12 months. The council could, however, make amendments to the four ordinances, provided those amendments do not amount to a repeal.
All right. So my next question is, so let's talk about rent stabilization, and now we have caps, you know, to a percentage of CPI of 2.75. If the council says, well, we want to raise that to 4%, you know, maybe not say that back, back to the state required limits, is that, would that be allowed?
I believe it would be, council member, yes.
So would it also be, so would it be also allowed to go back to the state limits, or would that be too far?
I don't think it would be too far, council member.
But could just go back?
Yes.
That would not effectively be a repeal?
That's not effectively a repeal of the ordinance because it would still put a cap in place. It's just a different cap than the one that's currently existing in the ordinance.
Okay. So you touched on the 12 months. It's only the 12 months, because I, I had a misunderstanding that, you know, the repeal, the repeal would give us, you know, the community 12 months. So that is not the case. It's only another full repeal by the council that's limited?
In my opinion, that's correct, council member.
Okay. And if the council revisits each ordinance, so for example, this next month, they want to revisit the anti-harassment and, and just focus on the anti-harassment, and then maybe just take away some of those rights and go back to the state, all right? So they just pick, pick one ordinance, and then the community says, well, we don't agree with that. Then the community would have to go ahead and start a referendum on that ordinance. Is that correct? Or would that come back as a package?
It would depend on the direction of the council, and it would be, depend on the, the terms of that ordinance that were considered by the council. So it's hard to answer that question without knowing exactly what action the council would be taking.
Sir, I guess my question is this. If we were to take each ordinance piece by piece and say, for this three months, we're going to address the anti-harassment, and then the next three months, and so we start passing those amendments to those ordinances. If, like what happened with these, this repeal, the community would have to pass a referendum on each ordinance that they're not comfortable with, is that correct?
Correct.
And despite us being a, a, a big city, we are often a little city, and it's, it's my understanding that there has been discussions to form a committee to try to come up with some solutions or maybe some changes to some of these ordinance. And I guess, for me, it's, it's important to understand what the council's motives are be, before their decisions. Oh, my apologies. And so if the, and my question will be directed at the mayor. If, if, if your direction is to repeal the repeal, is your intention to start making changes or, you know, getting folks together to make those changes, or is your, your goal in mind to see how these ordinances play out over a specific amount of time?
At this point, my goal has been for the two points of view to talk and see if they can find a solution. And, and I really haven't thought beyond that because I think, I, I, I think folks who want to find common ground can find it, and, and, and that's why I asked the, the two parties, for lack of a better phrase, to, to see if they could meet and, and find that common ground. I, I'm much more interested in the entire community solving, coming to a conclusion that's good for everyone than us imposing something. That, that's, that's my, that's my interest. That's why I asked the two groups to talk. I still like that idea because I, 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 I just believe people should be able to figure this out. And I haven't thought much beyond that, that I think people should talk and try and solve the problem.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Mayor, to your line of thought here, I agree with you. My question here is, I'm going to ask you or the city manager, whatever is appropriate here. I think there's been good dialogue with some people getting together with the pros and cons, renters, landlords, property owners. And I think there's been good dialogue, whether agreement or disagreement, I don't know. Would you be interested, because, because I'm like you, I, I want to hear from these folks that got together, see if they're looking for, if they got some common ground. Would you be open to continue this dialogue before we make a decision? I know some people say we have to rush it. Other people says, give us time where we can go out to the community and talk. Would, would you consider, I'm hearing one or two community meetings. I'm, I'm looking at Adam because I think he brings a great balance to the discussion. I'm looking at Amy as well. I think people on both sides are open to continuing dialogue. How much time, I don't know, but would that be appropriate to do before we make a decision?
I, I would just simply say this. I, when asking the groups to talk, knowing that September 9th was in front of us, I, personally, I didn't expect point-by-point agreement. We, we all know that there's kind of a weighted average on the four ordinances, but, but from my standpoint, I certainly would have been very comfortable with, we're making progress. We seem to be close. We want to kind of polish the stone around, you know, the, the cap, you know, because that was kind of the lead item to make progress on. And if folks said, hey, we need a little, little more time, I, I think all of us would have been able to sense that there's a spirit of goodwill and some momentum, and I would want those groups to continue to talk, and I would be confident in the city attorney's ability to, you know, work with the groups and get to where we thought we needed to be. One other, ultimately, at the end of the day, we're going to have to talk. Everybody knows that. So why, why kick that can down the road? Let, let's talk. And, and one of the reasons that's important to do, and I think we all know this, is, is this is a community with enormous opportunities in front of it. They are way more significant than people realize. They, they truly are. But we're not going to get there without addressing some of the significant challenges we have. You know, infrastructure is kind of an open-ended word, but let, let me absolutely assure this community that challenges are competing with the opportunities, and we need to be together and find common ground. And, and I, and I frankly view and hope this is a good opportunity, because this is not going to be the first issue that folks of goodwill and different opinions have got, have got, got to work through. But, but I'd like to view this as a test that, that we, we can talk and figure it out. Because I, because just from my perspective, you know, the council heard loud and clear the economic challenges of the community at the various, you know, particularly from, you know, from an economic standpoint, from a fixed income standpoint. Nobody is insensitive to that. So my view is this is a great test and opportunity for us to figure this out, because we're going to have other stuff to figure out. So to your point, I certainly would be very open to continuing the conversation with the idea that we could have a signal by the next meeting that, you know, we're probably going to make progress. But, you know, going back to Andrew's question, I haven't thought beyond, I think and believe folks with different opinions and of goodwill can move, move the ball downfield. I haven't thought any farther than that because frankly, I'm preoccupied with the future of this community and the, and the opportunities and challenges we have in front of us. This is a significant issue, and housing is a big part of our future, and affordability is a big part of our issue. Everybody gets that. But, so to your point, I hope people can talk, and, you know, council member Barrera, you were on, on record a couple of times, which I, which I appreciate. You know, let, let's talk and see if we can work together.
And, and sir, to your point, we desperately need housing. We're talking future. I know there's a developer that already at the latter part of next year is going to start the first part of the housing and the new...
Trust me, I hope it's the first part of next year, not the latter part.
In the future growth area, and, and I'm with you. I, I think the seriousness here, we have people in front of us that are struggling on a day-to-day, rent is, and, and you know what? That's, the market does that. We don't have control over that. But the reality is that these folks are needing fair representation, again, however that looks. My concern is, and before, ultimately, we're responsible. We're going to vote, and we're going to make the hard decision. But I would like to hear when it's appropriate at this meeting. There has been groups meeting. I would like to hear the dialogue and, and allow them to share with us what they think as we go along, what we should do, and then, again, it is our responsibility, but I think I would be very interested in finding out what they came up with. And just listening to two or three individuals, looking at Mr. Leonard Bati there, I think more dialogue needs to take place, but, but I would like to hear from the groups when it, when it's appropriate.
Well, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're going to hear from the public.
Not, 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 not just...
No, and, and I, and I hear you. Yeah, no, I, I would be happy to accommodate that and build that into the, the comment process.
But do, but do you know who I'm talking about?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think so. Councilmember Brajas?
Thank you, Mayor. My questions are largely pertinent to the cost of any of these actions. So just for whoever, whichever staff member is most appropriate to respond to this question, but which of these four options would be the most cost-effective for the city?
I don't think cost-effective is necessarily the right term, but I can answer it this way by saying that repealing the repeal ordinance will have no cost.
And for any of the, whether it's, if it's a special election before the end of this fiscal year, where would those funds be pulled from potentially?
So, council member, as in the report, we would look first to our contingency budget, which is, it's got a $600 and change still left in it. We would look first to that. And then, depending on the cost, if it's more than that, we would have to look at potential reserves or find, you know, pause other expenditures to cover them. From a process perspective, we start every year with an estimated balance, and we commonly refer to it as the fund balance. But that's a balance of a fund. That's not an actual cash account or anything. So we're estimating what we're going to finish the year. So once the audit is done, we lock in the fund balance for the, the past year that we now roll forward for the upcoming year. So we would probably have a better sense of that. We're back on track on our audits. We would have a better sense of that by the end of the year. So contingency would be first, reserves and/or potential other, other, or just stopping other expenditures till we know what our fund balance is. So that, that would, that would come this year. In the future, if it's after, if it's for an election after July 1st, 2026, then we would just simply build that into the budget for next fiscal year.
And what would, quote, "building it into the budget" mean?
So if you give us direction, that would be one of the expenditures we have to cover from the beginning. So we will look at your council priorities. We will look at salaries and benefits, and public safety and so forth, based on the priorities laid out by the council. And then we probably, we would, I would bring this before any capital, any new capital, any CIPs, any new initiatives. So we'd have to cover it because now we've set it for election, so we have to be prepared to pay for the cost.
So if it were to be included in the next fiscal year's budget process, as part of that process, how would that impact city services?
It's too early to tell. Let's just, let's just play it out for this year. We had included it for, let's just say we're having, we would have had this conversation already. Well, it would have, at a minimum, impacted what we set aside in contingencies. So we would have probably, we would not come forward with the million-dollar contingency amount, which, by the way, we already used to keep the navigation center in Chinatown open through March. That gave you the ability to do that. So we would have probably started with a, close to a zero balance in contingencies. We also might not have set aside some of our maintenance reserves that we set aside to give you some capacity because last year, we actually had to fix the HVAC system at Sherwood Hall. So it would probably start there. We were, it would, it would have affected that. So it would likely affect that moving forward.
Okay. Question.
Councilmember, if I, I'll just go ahead and just add a little bit to that as well. With respect to budgeting for next fiscal year, every other year, every even number year, my office will budget for our general municipal election anyway, so that cost will be incurred as part of, basically, it'll fall under that same umbrella for our general municipal election if it happens in November or anytime next fiscal year. Now, if we decide on a special, then obviously, that budgeting, that amount that we budget would have to be significantly higher.
So effectively, if it were to be a special election within this fiscal year, we would effectively be, at the very least, wiping out our entire contingency reserves...
Correct.
...for this fiscal year. And in the scenario that it does get put for a general election, we would still wipe out our contingencies for the following fiscal year.
To the extent, we would, like our clerk just reminded and said, we, we would account for some cost already because we have municipal elections every two years. So it would just depend on the final cost.
So historically, over the last couple of election years for our general election, I have budgeted $500,000. We have fell, we come below that simply because we're sharing that cost with all the other jurisdictions that are consolidating with the November election. So there's an opportunity for shared cost. You know, we're, we're not having to pay as we would for like a standalone for all the precinct voting locations, for all the, the staff that gets, that the county elections has to staff up for that type of, of, of election for a special. There's a lot more that goes into a special, especially if it's just Salinas, because we're not crossing any jurisdictional boundaries with any other ballot measures or any other elections that are, are special elections that are scheduled.
So should, if we had a general election this year, we would have included another half a million dollars in the budget. So it will impact us next year because that wasn't reflected this fiscal year. But we, we, this is an expense that we've handled in the past. It would still impact us. To, should answer your question, your least costly election, I believe correctly, would be the general election.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Aurelio?
I'm going to start off maybe a little bit with something a little bit more procedurally, if that's the correct term. But before we move forward, I know that we have a lot of people here in the chambers. I don't know how many people we have outside. I just think that it would be appropriate, before it gets too cold or too dark, that we also provide them a place to sit. I know that we have two conference rooms, so if somebody might be able to gauge how many people we have outside because don't want to have people standing for so long considering the amount of comments that we might be taking tonight. I, I just think it's the right thing to, to do, to make sure that we provide some additional seating and, right, somewhere to sit, because I know it's going to start getting dark and cold pretty soon. My question, and I think I started here a little bit of it right now. So as far as tonight, this council could go ahead and repeal the repeal, and then as soon as the next council meeting or in three months from now begin to make modifications to the ordinances on any one of the issues that they may want to, to bring up. Am I hearing that correct, right?
That's correct, council member.
Okay. And then also, with the council, tonight also have the opportunity to make a request to the stakeholders to put together an advisory committee. I know that this has been a very contentious issue. I know that there are players on both sides. Would we have that ability to... Would we have that ability to put two groups together and ask them to identify, like, their one or two top concerns or top issues, and discuss, and potentially come back to this council for a recommendation, have it done at a community level?
Those two groups exist and have been talking. Yeah, so that's-
My understanding that there are two groups-
Yeah.
And we would look to that group to come back.
Yeah. To Councilmember Barrera's point, those groups have begun a conversation, and we'll expect to hear from them. Yeah. We will hear from them shortly.
That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Gloria.
I don't have any questions. I just want to hear from the stakeholders, the two groups that had, that came together and had the conversations.
Couple of quick questions. Is it my understanding that the cost of either a special or general election would significantly impact our infrastructure and other services that we're able to provide? Is that correct?
And we're answering that in a vacuum. If we were to look at what we have, it may. I'm not going to tell you definitively. We have CIP that's still underway. So, for example, the project that we were rebidding, you know, we have funding that we think we have for that project, so it wouldn't impact that. So, we would just have to go through that budgeting process.
Okay. And then, Mr. Callahan, if we were to push this out to the next council meeting, we would still have the same options available to us at that time, which would be election or repeal the repeal?
That's correct, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. And then, my final is, I guess this might be directed at Mayor Donahue. Would you be opposed to opening up to a little bit bigger range of stakeholders so that we can include more voices? I feel like we hit a percentage of the population, but there's a huge percentage that hasn't weighed in on this subject.
Sure. And the way, and Councilmember Barrera and I had chatted about this, you know, these groups agreed to an initial meeting. I think there was some preparation and meeting before they got in the room. But under all circumstances, this was never like jury duty, that everything had to stay in the room, and then when you went home at night, you couldn't talk to anyone. The idea was to have a very open-ended process, caucus, change, you know, make the folks' meeting interchangeable as needed as you get into it, because I anticipated a series, a series of conversations. And I think if it's a process and a community-based dialogue, I would fully, I would fully expect that. I think the only criteria, but it would be up to the groups, you know, how many people do you want in the room at the same time when you're, you know, but again, I would leave it to the groups to manage that process. What I'm interested in, and I think we all are, because, I mean, I think I'm hearing that very clearly here, is we would like a community-based solution to this conversation. So, and, you know, I no longer say sides. There are points of view, and each point of view should organize as they see fit, have the conversation needed. And then, I think we would all be delighted if we were presented a solution or the indications that we can get there. And I would just tell you as a practical matter, this council needs to, I mean, guess what? We're almost pretty close to shopping days till Christmas. We've got about seven council meetings left to go, and we've still got a lot of business to attend to. Nothing would please all of us more if we can get this figured out, because we've got things we have to attend to. So, to your point, if the groups wanted to expand and contract, in my mind, as long as they're talking, frankly, by the time we got to the 23rd and everyone felt like the conversations were going well, I think we can take it from there.
Okay. And then, finally, Mr. Callahan, so those that are the stakeholders in these meetings, they are at liberty to talk to us as individual council members and share thoughts, decisions, et cetera? Or how does that work?
They could, Councilmember, I would just, as always, caution about Brown Act violations-
Yes.
-where council members talk amongst themselves.
Exactly.
You could very easily, I think, create a serial meeting by engaging with the stakeholder groups, and so my recommendation would be to steer clear of it.
Okay.
Let the community organizations function as a community organization, and then they can report back to the council as a whole.
Yeah, and I would just say for the record, the idea is not to have anybody counsel in these meetings.
Correct.
These are meant to be-
Hands off.
Hands off.
Yeah, just have at it, and let's see if we can come up with something that everybody can be comfortable, you know, can live with. And so, that's-
Okay, thank you.
So, I think the answer to your question is-
I think I know the ground rules now, so that's helpful.
As far as my concern, as long as people are effective moving forward, the more the merrier.
Sounds great, thank you.
Because that means you've got broader, you've got broader input into it, so. Okay, so with that, and to Councilmember Barrera's request, so we're on, in terms of general comment, we're on 90 seconds, so Councilmember Barrera, with your lead, I'll let the two points of view, whoever might want to represent them, have a few minutes to prepare. So, we'll hear some initial comments, and then, frankly, however minutes, you know, if you need five to 10 minutes, or if you want to do it jointly, go out and caucus and demonstrate the example of talking, and come back, and when you come back, we'll say, hey, you know, each point of view would like five minutes or 10 minutes, but no more than 10. But that, and then we'll proceed with public, is that, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and open public comment. We'll let the two points of view kind of figure out how they'd like to do their thing, and then we'll take it from there. I'm, and then I will, I think this covers everything. I'm going to put this on an hour and a half mark, and so I think we should be in good shape with that. So, because we have a few other items to attend to. So, with that, public comment, open for business. We'll do the first five, and then we'll wait, and then we'll get the points of view kind of thrown into the mix. So, we're on, or, but why don't we do this? Why don't we hear five, from five folks, take a break, and then we'll let the two points of view- We're open for business, first five comments, and then we'll pause and let the, and we're on 90 seconds.
Okay. My name is Judy Myers, and I've come before you previously. I inherited a house in December, and my, there are renters in the house because a lady that I inherited it from was in a nursing home, and she needed the rental income to keep her in the nursing home. She died, she left me her house. My daughter is in need of a house, my daughter. I wanted to get my daughter into the house, and I was told, because of this ordinance, I would have to pay the people that are living there, who, by the way, probably make over $150,000 or $60,000 a year. Okay. I would have to pay them three months' rent, and if my daughter did not stay in that house for five years, I had to contact them, let them know that they could come back at the same rent they were paying now. I haven't raised the rent in two years, not one rent increase. And by the way, if you do come back, I will pay whatever you paid to move out and whatever it costs you to move back in. This is wrong. I have one house, I inherited it, my daughter needs to live in it, she's living with us right now. She needs a house to live in, and it's going to cost me, it could cost anywhere from $10,200 to $13,000, $14,000 to get her in that house. That's wrong. One house, my house, and my daughter wants to live in it, needs to live in it. That, please, make an amendment to change that, if that's the way this goes. Please. Thank you.
Kathy Anderson, property owners of a few parcels. And you've got to have empathy for this woman, because this is the part that we have to put up, put up with as being a landlord, these stipulations and more layers and more layers. But I'm here actually to tell you, Mayor, I'm glad the way you're looking at this. Let these two sides get together. Don't take sides. Let these two people work it out. Do not do a special election. It's only going to cost more money. We've got so many opportunities, opportunities on the horizon that we need to focus on, so let's get past this. We're adults, we're investors, we're people that have had our properties a long time. I've had my properties a long time. So, the nice part is, is I get to rent it under market. But people that are buying property today to pencil out, that is why we have high rents. So, good job, and I look forward to these two sides getting together and move on with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi there. My name is Tyler Sullivan. I'm an attorney at California Rural Legal Assistance, and I'm here on behalf of low-income renters, a few specific clients that we have, low-income renters in Salinas. Just a couple of points on the various different comments from the City Council. Number one, I'm not sure there are two sides. There are a lot of renters, and I've interacted with a lot of them, a lot of low-income renters, and I don't know that they would necessarily subscribe to being on a side or another. So, I think that's, I struggle with that, especially as we talk about a resolution that would be a lasting resolution. Another question I have for the council is, Mayor Donahue, you said that you would like for the various stakeholders to come with a solution and present it to you. Something that I encourage the council to think about is, if that is presented to you, what assurances will the council give that it will honor that solution, right? So, you're asking people to undertake a significant body of work. There are four ordinances. We're talking about many hundreds of provisions that would potentially be edited, and I think it's challenging to ask them to undertake that without some assurances. Lastly, I would just point out, I don't know that the city attorney's analysis of just being able to repeal these ordinances piece by piece, that's not my reading of the law. So, I, I think that's a- If the idea is that you can somehow repeal piece by piece these elements, then-
Got it.
-that's clearly going against the will of the people in the repeal, so.
Got it.
Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
The late Bobby Kennedy, Senator Bobby Kennedy once said, "Some men see things as they are, and I see things as they never were." I see a city council that finally supports the majority of people in my hometown of Salinas. The vast majority of people in my hometown of Salinas rent. 53% of the people in this town rent. They're struggling to make it every day, every hour of every day. And if you support the people, support rent stabilization, because that keeps people from having their families not on the streets of Salinas. Support rent stabilization. CCA, what do they-
Thank you.
Thank you for this time this evening. I speak on behalf of my father. This ordinance is unfair to landlords that acquire their property using certain business models. Now, the city has decreased their property values and corrupted their ownership rights. This would be fair and acceptable if the rent control limit was only applicable to new purchases. You know, if we buy and sell a house today, going forward, I can understand that. It's not fair to penalize legacy landlords, most of which are small-time, you know, mom pops, shall we say. So, if the rent control could be just forward-going, you sell a house tomorrow, or whenever that day is, and then it applies then, then everybody would be fair. I believe that. And then, another thing, you know, the cap, it seems like it's 2.75% or that lower number, the incremental of the inflation, I did a rough calculation, is $24 a month. I don't know, am I wrong there? If it's $2,000 for rent, now I can only raise it $24 a month? And, you know, at that rate, seven months goes to the $170 a year per unit for the fee to the city. So, I got five months of, I shouldn't say income, I got five months to go against inflation, I'm going to put it that way. So, that $24 a month, you know, times seven, that covers the $170 that the city gets. Now, the rest of that, that five months, you know, is about $108 by the time I pay, you know, 10% to a property manager and 80, so I end up with about $85 a year to cover costs, inflation, and all that, so.
Thank you.
Think about that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are the two groups ready, ready to speak? If not, I'll do another five. Well, they are, we'll go five by five until we get the groups. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Donahue and City Councilmembers. My name is Nanti Rojas Mendoza, and I am a CCA Youth for Change leader and resident of Salinas in District 6. I am here tonight in support of the Residential Rental Registration and Rent Stabilization Program. When you go home tonight, many of you have the privilege of going to a home with only you and yourself in it. That's a privilege. The reality is that our community is characterized by the most hard-working people, yet many still can't afford to live comfortably with their families. Families are forced to share one home with many families in order to maintain a roof over their heads. These protections you are actively fighting to oppose are the only protections that these families have left. The people who pick your fruit that you have on your table, who package the salads that you enjoy for lunch, and who work for low wages are asking for your protection. I urge you to protect the people that you serve and vote to keep these ordinances in place. When you do so, our community and the hard-working people who characterize them and contribute to our economy, culture, and everyday life can have the protections that they deserve. I acknowledge the necessity to do your job and make the informed decisions you have to make, but our community is pleading to be protected. I hope that you, as a council, will take into account the issues that the community that you serve is facing and will put yourself in their shoes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please, even though I'm tempted to, she did a great job, but let's-
Good evening, Mayor Donahue and Councilmembers. My name is Alejandra Soto, and I am a CCA Youth for Change leader and a resident of Salinas in District 4. I am here tonight to speak on the Residential Rental Registration and Rent Stabilization Program. For many of you, the question of whether you are able to afford your home or keep it in the first place is not a thought that crosses your mind. Many residents of your community are not as fortunate. I live in an apartment with five people and only two bedrooms and two bathrooms in District 4. Yet, our rent is almost $4,000 every month, leaving us to worry about basic necessities like food while already being an undill living situation. Though it might be undill, we have no choice but to pay the expense. If these already high rent prices were to rise, not just my family, but hundreds of others will be left vulnerable. These protections you are choosing to remove are not only protections for my family and others like mine have no, and mine have in order to keep a roof over our heads. No person should be worrying about whether or not their income will be enough for food to feed their families. In a state of vulnerability in our community, these protections are all more important. Removing these programs only adds another problem to our community while already dealing with the fear of deportations, low wages, exploitation, and more. For this reason, I urge you all to continue to support the ordinance by repealing your repeal of the ordinances on June 3rd and keep them in place. Tonight, you will hear or have heard many stories from young generations who want this change, not only for our present, but also for our future. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Donahue and City Councilmembers. My name is Carlos Mendoza, a Youth for Change youth leader with CCA and a resident of District 2, under Tony Barrera. I am here tonight in, to speak in support of the Residential Rental Registration and Rent Stabilization Program. As a youth in Salinas, this discussion is important because every year, the rent in Salinas keeps drastically increasing, resulting in more residents having to work many more hours just to be able to afford their rent. These ordinances are important to the community since it gives them protection and better security in their homes. My family suffers from the loss of these ordinances, having to work six days a week just to barely be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment for me and my two siblings. Most of these, most of this money having to go towards rent, and the rest goes to bills and other necessities. Therefore, I hope you, I hope you consider supporting the ordinance that is beneficial to Salinas residents and be able to keep them by repealing your repeal on the ordinance of, on ordinances of June 3rd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Michael Duran. I am a resident of District 5. I'm with the youth of CCA. Today, I am here to speak about the ordinances that are in place, and would like to speak on my behalf for you guys to repeal the repeal. So, today, I'm starting off with, I'm going to talk about my personal experiences with these issues. Rent is too high and is rising at an uncontrollable rate. I've lived in an apartment complex all my life. I have multiple- I have multiple friends moved due to the rent increasing, and they weren't able to keep up. I used to be able to go outside and enjoy my life, but now I have no one to hang out with or talk to. I have a friend currently struggling really, really badly because of these rent increases. It's gotten so bad to the point where her boyfriend has to buy her clothes and food to help out. This just goes to show how bad this crisis has gotten. Here's the thing, I'm a teenager. I shouldn't be worrying if my family can make ends meet. We struggle with rent, and on top of that, we still have to pay for utilities such as water and electricity. The amount we pay for necessities doesn't barely leave room for any recreational activities such as going out. I worry that one day, I wake up and I find out that we're being evicted because we weren't able to pay the rent. I'm new to this, but if I have to use my voice, then so be it. This crisis has gotten so bad that youths out here are speaking about personal experiences, and it shows the improvidence and sympathy you guys have for us. Once rent gets too high and we're gone, there'll be normal people and a huge loss of money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, all right, we'll do two more, and then Jacob and Huel will, and then the other group, okay? Go ahead.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Daniel Martinez. I am a CCA Youth for Change leader and former renter of Salinas. I am here to ask, who do you guys represent? The real estate developers, the property owners, landlords? None of these is correct. You all represent the people of Salinas, no one but the people of Salinas. Over 10,000 residents have signed a petition for these ordinances to stay and protect different families, workers, seniors, and students. All signed, but it seems this isn't enough for you. Of those signatures, more than 7,000 have been officially verified by the Monterey County Elections Department. I believe this is more than necessary. Ignoring these signatures would be ignoring the same people you are meant to serve. I ask you to please respect the will of the people and repeal your June vote and allow the rent stabilization and other tenant protection ordinances to remain in effect. I live in fear that without these ordinances, there would be an increase of housing instability for tenants like me and my family, potentially leading to higher rents and more frequent displacements. Please don't force costly special elections, which would waste billions of dollars of the taxpayer's money that could go to a better cause. The decision is simple. Listen to the voice of the people you're meant to serve and protect, or ignore them. I hope you all reinstate and protect the city's ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good afternoon. I don't need to introduce myself, you know who I am. We are done explaining ourselves. Protect Salinas Renters has shown up again and again with facts, signatures, stories that should have shaken the city to its core. We've laid bare truth. Families are being displaced, elders are being priced out, and working people are being pushed to the margins. And still, you repeal the protections that gave us a sliver of stability. So let's be clear, we're not here to plead, we are here to take control. This is no longer a policy debate, it's a declaration. Rent stabilization, anti-arrestment laws, just cause eviction protections are not optional, they are essential. And they will be reinstated, not because you allow it, because the people demanded it. One in 10 voters signed a referendum. That's not a statistic, it's a signal. We are organized, we are mobilized, and we are done waiting for permission. If you won't protect the renters, we will. If you won't lead, we'll replace you. This is our city, our homes, our fight. We are Protect Salinas Renters, and we are taking back what is ours. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen.
Okay, good afternoon. First, I'd like to start off, the reason we're in this position is because you guys rushed a repeal of the ordinances. It was not data-driven. Our position is repeal your repeal, and no changes for a year to allow for the ordinances to be implemented. So a lot of landlords have been saying that there's not a sufficient rate of return. The ordinance has a provision that allows for landlords to petition. When we spoke with landlords, their frustration is the process itself, right? So we're open to dialogue, but before we can even get there, we need the city to actually implement these policies. You need to do town hall meetings. A lot of landlords, lots of tenants, don't know what to do, right? So you guys are already talking about making changes without the first of them even being implemented to begin with, right? We've asked for data. Councilman Barajas, our team has reached out to you and asked, hey, show us the numbers that you said we lost rental units. Show us that data. We provide the data, right? That presentation should be a public document that can be allowed for scrutiny to see if it's actually even accurate. Mayor, we asked you, and we showed you data, and oftentimes, you said, we looked at data, but not just in the public view, right? That's why there's a lot of mistrust. None of this stuff is done in the public. People state facts as though they're facts without actually providing the reports and the data to verify it. They'll say, hey, we did this and that based off a report I read. Show us the report. It could be the reports inaccurate. You know, that's part of a public trust campaign.
No, no, they get to keep going, yeah.
So our biggest thing is just to reemphasize, right? We're here because these things were not implemented. So you need to repeal your repeal, right? No cost. Implement the ordinances for a year, right? There's landlord concerns, but there's also ordinances in there that allow for them to get a fair rate of return. That's super important for landlords to understand. You can petition, right? Whenever expenses are high. So that's why we don't feel initially why anything should be changed, because we actually haven't seen if they even work, right? It was only five months of data, and I looked up the sales data, there was a lot of comments being made that, hey, we're bleeding housing units. I looked up housing data for the last five years, not true at all, right? And I'm willing to make those documents public, and if I'm incorrect, and let's show the data, and let's analyze it over the last five years. And we'll let Jasmine speak.
Good afternoon, Council members and Mayor Donahue. It's very simple. Repeal your repeal without any modifications, or let the voters decide. This movement that was started by Protect Salinas Renters is more than 10,400 people that signed, and more than 200 volunteers. All of these people behind me, it was made possible because of them, because of us, because we have the power, and that's why I want to say thank you to the five of you who made the very, very terrible decision that you did about repealing the ordinances. Because thanks to you, people woke up. I woke up, and I realized that when elected officials fail us, the people have power. The people woke up, and we're organized and ready for whatever you throw our way.
No modifications.
We're not doing that.
So Mayor, Huel Hernandez is Executive Director at the Center for Community Advocacy. It's again, it's repeal the repeal, I think it's the most cost-effective thing to do. We can continue dialogue, and community engagement is super important for us. We, over the weekend, talked to a lot of people, many of them said, that's the reason why we went out there and collected these signatures. We need data, we need time, repeal the repeal, and if you're gonna make modifications, let's just go to the elections in November. So that's where the group stands as of today.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's the group. I want to hear from the other group, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Colleen Bailey, and I am the President and CEO of the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce. At the last City Council meeting, there was a great deal of public comment regarding the rental ordinances. Councilmember Barrera said that he heard strong arguments on both sides of the issue and asked that the two sides come together to negotiate a deal. In response to that request, the chamber was asked to convene a meeting of both sides. We agreed to play the role as convener if Huel Hernandez from CCA would serve as a convening partner, since CCA specializes in mediating between landlords and renters and has done so successfully for over 30 years. Huel worked with a consortium of renter representatives to identify seven people, including himself, who could speak from the renter perspective, and the Chamber of Commerce worked with the landlord coalition to identify seven people that could speak from the landlord perspective. The landlord group prepared, recommended amendments to these ordinances and a top-five list of priorities, which were provided to the full group ahead of the meeting. The full group met on Friday morning. At the meeting, the renter group said that they were not able to negotiate, but were there to open a dialogue. After the meeting, they were planning to engage their constituents in a conversation about what had been presented to them during the meeting. We are hoping to meet again, to hear the response, and to see if we can make any progress. Therefore, we are asking for an extension of this process until September 23rd. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and city staff, and to all the people behind me, thank you. This is truly a difficult process, I know, but one that I respect the amount of work going into it and the diligence. And I deeply respect the all-volunteer referendum petition effort, that's genuinely impressive. So 10% of the voters have made it clear, we need to talk more. I was encouraged by the meeting, the initial meeting, talking with renters advocates. I served on the TAC Committee since 2022. I spent years talking about these ordinances, but we achieved a better dialogue in one meeting last week than in three years of TAC Committee meetings. Whereas previous staff and council members frankly disregarded almost all data and evidence presented by housing providers, now stakeholders are trying to hear each other out. Whereas only one piece of housing provider's feedback was incorporated into the ordinances, now we are trying to work through all of these issues with these complicated laws. Whereas our earlier attempt to facilitate a dialogue in January resulted in no common ground, now both sides are coming to the table. We didn't figure this all out in the initial meeting, not even close, but we got started. I believe the democratic process is sacred, but I believe the power of dialogue is greater. The renters advocates told us that they needed more time to communicate with their constituents. Let's give this dialogue a chance, and I still believe that the democratic process is sacred. I still believe the other 90% of Salinas voters deserve to weigh in, but let's see if we can save a bit of money, and maybe that money can go towards a program like Rental Assistance.
Hi, Craig Cummings with Mango Property Management. I'm not part of a public forum normally. I came out of the woodwork because I was so impassioned by this ordinance and what I truly believe it will do. I keep my ear to the iron with what's going on in different cities with these things, and when I heard about the low percentage of rent increase in some of the provisions, I just, even though I hate public speaking, I'm very nervous when I do this, I felt like I had to do it. I truly believe in my heart that the low percentage of rent increase will hurt future generations of renters. When you have vacancies and you have to make ends meet with increasing expenses, EPS did a study, they said, low-income housing, tax-credit properties, we're seeing about 5% per year increase in expense. It's higher than that here in Salinas, and nobody ever reached out to one of the larger property managers and said, hey, what is your data? We're gonna make a very, very serious decision. A lot of people from this side are saying, this could really hurt our constituents, but our constituents thinks we really need to have a 2% threshold for rent increases. So what is your side? What is the data? So I think if we get to the table and we show data, true data, of what we're experiencing as property managers, what landlords experiencing, we represent people who have a single-family home, duplexes, all the way up to larger properties, but this is not a lie. This is the truth. The expenses are going up since COVID, it's been dramatic. But over the last 10 years, it's been about 7% on average. So I really think if we come to the table and make minor changes, everything else can stay, but there's a few really important things that we need to hash out quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff Davy, monitor, property manager. You know, it was really enlightening to be in that meeting on Friday. It was good to see both opinions across the table, and we can make headway. Your question is, Councilmember Sandoval, we're very good at the beginning of the meeting, because there's nothing preventing this council from making modifications any time after the repeal. Instead of doing that randomly, or doing it without any sort of organization and plan, let the groups get together, come up with some reasonable things they can live with, and those will be the modifications that are considered. The process is actually coming together now in a very good way. The last three years, not so much. It's a good thing, let it continue. We'd like to see you go to September 23rd so that we can have these meetings, get together, and come back with basically a better plan. That's basically what we're hoping for. So thank you.
Is this being timed?
These are the presentation of the two groups, the Councilmember... Yeah, so, yeah, no, you're fine. Are there a couple more comments from the group before we go to public comment? Okay, has the group that met, everyone said what they want? Okay, we are now back to public comment, 90 seconds, and we have a ways to go. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to say that there's been multiple times that I come here and I talk about capitalism, and I'd like to define what that means to me. You see, capitalism isn't just necessarily a for-profit system, it's actually a profit and loss system, because losses also tell us what not to produce or what not to service. I'd also like to add on and say that, you know, scarcity and shortages is also something that we really need to define and make sure what that means. You see, we could be, we could have scarce resources that have alternative uses that are not being used, but not necessarily be in a shortage. Or we can be in a shortage of homes, for example, but not necessarily be scarce in resources. And I'm saying that from an economic standpoint. You see, right now, our economy is calling for building homes and increasing supply, but there's a lot of bureaucracy things in place that are preventing that. And I feel that if we go with this romanticized argument of rent stabilization, we're not really being realistic of what's really happening. You see, one house can go up for rent, but there's 15 people in there, so the demand is increasing the prices. So we need to build homes and increase supply. Simple supply and demand standard, you know? I know it's hard to pay rent right now, everything's expensive, but current mortgage rates are more than what rented is too, so we need to think about that too. We need to increase homes and build up to our supply. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Reyes. This is not about a landlord or a manager having purchased a single-family residence 25 years ago, 20 years ago, and is somehow scared of being in the red. They're making $2,000 profit, so all these numbers that they give you, that's already on top of the $2,000. What you have here is, you have a situation where people are being told what to do, and they don't like that, and that's why they are here. It's not because they are afraid to lose money, they're afraid not to make as much money. So the idea that those people come here and tell you that they're hurting or they're gonna be hurting is a lie. We all know that. Some of these people own 25, 30, 40, 50 units. They're not going in the red, okay? So let's just start there. It's that you're gonna make less money. A tenant does not pay less for energy, a tenant does not pay less for gas, a tenant does not pay less for food. But all of you here are represented primarily by tenants. We talked about the 53 versus 47. That's tenants versus homeowners. Landlords, it's even smaller than that. There are smaller, it's a smaller group of landlords. You are dealing with homeowners and tenants in this community, by far. And so when we come together and you're not able to look at numbers and say, why is Salinas in the top two? At one point, they were the least affordable. What's the formula? The amount of money that a tenant makes to pay the landlord. Let's look at those formulas. Why aren't we also number four in education? Because we can't afford to take our kids into situations where it costs money.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Applin, and I am a property manager here in Salinas. I am third generation of family that has built and has scraped and has saved to build homes for renters. And now I'm managing lots of properties, and here we are. I'm here to tell you that I represent about 200 owners, and they're scared. They're very scared. You're hearing a lot of emotion about tenants, but you're not hearing emotion from owners, and some of them can't be here. Some of them are, may live even in the outskirts in Hollister or Off 68, and they can't be here. So I'm here to tell you that these people have higher interest rates, higher utilities, they are paying utilities, they are paying a cost of living and dealing with inflation and dealing with unexpected lateral sewer lines that go out, and they're dealing with all of these things, and all I'm hearing from tenants are larger rent amounts than my tenants are paying. And we have about 600 units. So data would be great if you were really talking to a property manager and you're really talking... and you're really talking about real issues instead of... I'll leave with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
According to Bernie Sanders, every year approximately 550,000 people lose all their wealth and property because of emergency medical services. Thousands die because they don't have access to medical care. Homelessness is skyrocketing in front of us. The gap between the haves and the half-nots is getting wider as we speak. While Ralph Walder Anderson says, "The only thing necessary for the triumphs of evil is for good men and women to do nothing." And I'm asking you, are you doing anything? Remember, the moderate county residents are watching you. And I believe that the only way to solve these present-day atrocities is to start reprogramming our minds towards fairness, equality, and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Eric Larson. I'm with Teamsters Local 856. And I need to clear up the record about the meeting last Friday with the Chamber of Commerce and Protect Salinas tenants. Respectful meeting. Two sides came together. They shared their perspectives. Chamber landlords, realtors pushed the tenant organization to have some kind of response to their proposal. And they said, look, we can't respond until we meet with our executive committee and our volunteers. Protect Salinas tenants have met with their executive committee and their volunteers, and their answer is repeal your vote. Give it one year of community involvement and community engagement. Let's collect the data. If you don't vote in that direction, then put this darn thing on the ballot and let the citizens of Salinas vote. That is the position of Protect Salinas tenants. It's good to have dialogue and conversation, but it's also good to just be very clear about where an organization stands. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Lauren Walters, and I am a City of Salinas resident. I'm here to comment in favor of repealing the repeal of the rent stabilization ordinances. Our community has been consistent in communicating to y'all for months about the importance of having these basic protections on the books for renters who make up the majority of Salinas residents. Last week, a few council members suggested that the onus was on Protect Salinas Renters Group to convene with the local rental companies and landlords to come up with a shared solution. Suggesting this is not only condescending, but is also tone deaf. If finding common ground were so important to these stakeholders, why were they not open to having a dialogue until the people started to raise their voices? It's probably because they aren't truly interested in a dialogue, but only in protecting their own interests. As a homeowner and landlord, I stand with the over 10,000 Salinas residents that have done the footwork and care enough to show up week after week and now month after month, loud and proud. It's not too late for y'all to make the right decision tonight for your constituents and the city budget. Repeal the repeal. No amendments to the ordinances until sufficient data is collected. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to ask, as a matter of courtesy, even though you're not in the chambers, to please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
Good evening. Name is Eric Peterson. And the community has spoke. Hopefully, people will listen. If this goes to an election, the good guys already have 15%. And all the out-of-Salinas money you can get together isn't going to overcome that. There's already been two years of listening. Thank you.
Hello, Mark Foley, a small property owner here in Salinas. I just want to say, we have the right to vote. They got the referendum, and the issue needs to be cited by all the people of Salinas. As we've heard earlier, only 10% of the people signed this referendum, and the other 90% of the people need to be heard from. We live in a democracy, not a socialist communist society. We are supposed to have the right to vote. Do not deny the people their right to vote. Elections can be expensive. That is the democratic process. As one justice has said, "You cannot put the burden of many on a few," which I really believe is what's happening here. I don't feel that the landlords here are the bad people. The property owners are the bad people. They are the very people that are providing the housing that we all so badly need. So why single us out? The Fifth Amendment says, "Thou shall not take private property for public use without just compensation." 1.57% is not just compensation. We all want cheap, but that is not possible today, as everybody knows, if you're living. Because you're living in California, especially here today in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Graciela Gonzalez. Estoy con Centro Binacional para el Desarrollo Indígena Oaxaqueño. Soy de la comunidad mixteca. Y estoy aquí lamentablemente triste, ¿verdad? Porque nuestra comunidad no pudo estar presente ya que ellos salen hasta las 6:00 de la tarde, 7:00 de la tarde en el campo porque ahorita están tratando de juntar dinero precisamente para pagar la renta durante el invierno. Entonces, las reuniones anteriores ellos han tratado de estar presentes, pero por lo visto de la decisión que se ha estado tomando en el concilio no se ha escuchado su voz. Pero aún seguimos aquí. Seguimos aquí para que puedan revocar la revocación de las ordenanzas, ya que ha sido un alivio para ellos. Estos cuantos meses que han pasado, ellos tienen, han tenido un beneficio, ¿no? Ya no les han subido tanto la renta. Entonces, decirles a ellos que ya está por quitarse es decepcionante porque para la comunidad indígena alzar su voz es muy difícil ya que ellos han sido, de muchas maneras, también han tenido que salir de sus tierras. Pero de todas formas, son personas que trabajamos, somos trabajadores esenciales aquí en este lugar. Entonces, llevamos comida a la mesa para todo California incluso. Entonces, queremos que puedan respetar eso y que no le quiten ese alivio que ha tenido la comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Graciela Gonzalez, and I'm with CCVDO. I am part of the Mixteco community. And I'm here, and I feel sad because the Mixteco community is not present. They're not able to be present because they're working in the fields. They have to work extra hours because winter is coming, and they have to work more to be able to pay the rent. But they're still wanting to know what's happening. I'm here, I'm present. It's hard for them to elevate their voices, but they want the repeal, to repeal the repeal. This has been something that has given a lot of relief to the Mixteco community. For many months, they have not increased the rent, and that gives them release, relief, I'm sorry. It is really hard for the community to come here and raise their voices. They have been having to leave their own land to come here. They're considered essential workers. They're the ones that work and put food on the table in all California. So I really ask you to please respect their voices and do not take away this relief that they have been feeling regarding the rent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just want to say a few things. Along with Adam, I have been involved with the original TAC in 2022, which convened actually not for the rent stabilization ordinances, but actually for the rental registry. So that's where that started. So never was this a discussion in 2022 with the TAC team. In October 24th of 2023, council decided to have staff direct and explore the rent stabilization attendant protections and then follow up with the economic and planning systems, which would be EPS, to analyze the local market and the impacts. In April 2025, actually April 25th of 2024, we actually had our first reconvened TAC email. We convened on the first day of April 30th of 2024. We had five meetings in 10 weeks. So those were our discussions. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody's understanding that this wasn't a huge, long process. Our meetings were for an hour and a half. A lot of city staff, the city attorney was available for us. I want to go ahead and also stress about the investors, what they must achieve based off of the EPS report. They said that they need to have a reasonable return, that sacrifice cannot be undermined by long-term viability. EPS clearly framed 2.5% as a minimum threshold for landlords must sustain without undermining returns. That is not what's happening. There's never been a 2.5% raise for costs. But anyhow, try to support with data. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hey, and hey, Councilmember Barajas. I'm from District 4. You guys, you've heard a lot. It makes sense. Help out the families, help out the tenants. However you vote, we will know where your importance lies, what you care about. You care about property owners. You care about investors who aren't even from Salinas. These property owners aren't here. They don't live here. They live in, I don't even know where, okay? A lot of the tenants, all of these tenants, we live in Salinas, okay? So we will know what is important to you based on how you vote. And trust, this engagement is so beautiful. It makes me so happy. We'll be back, no matter what you do, okay? We're engaged. We'll fight for what's right. Yes or yes, whatever decision you make. So I look forward to seeing you. I hope you look forward to seeing me again because I'll definitely be back. And please, repeal the repeal. And if you're going to make any changes to it, let us vote for it, okay? Have a great day. It's a heart.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The rental stabilization should not be left solely in your hands because too often decisions in this chamber are shaped by political maneuvering and have truths. The people most affected, tenants, working families, and seniors on fixed income deserve a direct voice. Rental stabilization is about keeping roofs over people's heads. Let the voters decide. Don't deceive the public with the repeal by changing the verbiage and watering it down. Put it on the ballot and allow the community to make the choice at the next election. That is the only way to ensure transparency and accountability. Thank you.
I hope that's not a metaphor for the evening. Mr. Mayor and City Council members, City Manager and City Attorney, my name's Leonard Battie. I'm the Chair of the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce. I wasn't planning to come up and make any comments because I feel that both sides have very adequately explained where they are on their sides. But I love the city. And Councilman Barras, you asked a very salient question, and that is, what's the impact to the city if we repeal these ordinances? If we wait, if we wait a year? What's the financial impact to the city? I think the more important question is, what's the impact to our citizens? What's the impact to your constituents? And you've heard loud and clear from individual property owners, owners that are in your districts that are small mom and pop. Maybe they just own one rental unit, maybe two. That is income that they may be able to use to put their children through college, or maybe it's their retirement. And it's important that you think about those people who have been unrepresented in this process, okay? So from the chambers' perspective, we have convened with Protect Salinas renters. I have tremendous respect for them and what they have been able to do. I would like to see movement that we can come to some type of a consensus and agreement that we can present to you for you to vote on. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jason Pineda. I live in District 3. I'm a renter, and I'm just calling, or I'm just here to ask you to repeal the repeal without any modifications and to give the ordinance a chance. It feels a little bit, I feel a little guilty asking for that in a way because I support the ordinances, but we were at this position like three or four months ago. So I feel like, like kind of, it's a little bit, I don't, like, I'm not supporting my fellow renters. But in terms of the, like, wanting to meet and have a consensus, I think that it's like, that's great. Like, and like, hopefully, that's how we all are thinking of this situation because we are a community and we only have ourselves to support each other. But we had the option to do this a couple of months ago before the city council, the current city council, decided to repeal it. And as far as I know, there was no, nobody took up that offer. So I would question the sincerity of any kind of... Well, I don't want to question your sincerity, but I just question people saying that they want to have dialogue now, you know? Okay, so thank you.
Buenas tardes, alcalde, concejales. Ahorita viendo protegiendo a los inquilinos de Salinas y a mi familia. Voy a hacer un comentario. Tengo familia que vive en casas de propietarios que no les renta tan caro. Tengo mi cuñada en una casa de tres recámaras y paga 1,900. Tiene un apartamento, un cuarto arriba, disculpe con el baño, y el propietario le da opción a que rente allí arriba. Es que sí, le cobra mucho más barato. Tengo una comadre que vive en una casa también y es de dos recámaras. Ella paga 2,500 de renta. Ya tiene como unos 15 años viviendo allí, y nomás se le ha aumentado dos o tres veces, dice ella. Pero bien poco, no le aumentan mucho. Yo no entiendo por qué propietarios dicen que los costos, que los gastos, que esto y lo otro. Si hay propietarios que no cobran tanto. Tengo un, ves, como primo político. Él vive en Madera, compra casas que están destruidas. Las compra cash, las arregla, y la renta. Entonces, yo le pregunté cuánto pagaba de aseguranza, cuánto pagaba de otros gastos. Y el chiste es que con un mes paga la seguridad y con otro mes paga lo otro. Entonces, sí le queda dinero. Yo no entiendo por qué dicen las personas que no les queda. Y hay propietarios que no arreglan nada. Gracias.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor. I am here to protect my family and protect the renters. I'm not going to say there are landlords that they don't charge that much. For example, I have a sister-in-law. She lives in a three-bedroom house. She pays $1,900. There's a bathroom also, and there's like a little room that she has the option to rent out. And I also have another friend that she has two rooms. She pays 2,500. And she hasn't, and there hasn't been, he's been living there for 15 years, and the landlord has not increased the rent but two or three times. So I don't understand why other landlords come and say that that is not enough, that what they rent the houses is not going to cover their costs. Why do they have to rent the houses so? Why do the rent has to be so high? I also have a cousin, he lives in Madera, and what he does is that he buys houses that are destroyed. He flips them, and then he rents them out. So I was asking him, what are the costs? How much does it cost to rent it? And after you're renting the house, how much do you keep? And then he was saying, well, with one month, And then he was saying, well, with one month, I pay the insurance, you know? And so it's not true what they say. It's not true what they say, that they don't get enough money and when they rent the houses, they don't get enough to cover their costis. Landlords do, are able to cover their costis with the rents. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm John Jesson. Used to live in the city of Salinas for 23 years. I am a landlord. We have single-family dwellings, condos, and 50-unit apartment buildings, 12-unit apartment buildings. I really, I'd like to see this wait two more weeks. Let's try to work something out. We, I personally, on our projects, we needed a 4% return of cost of living increases every year. I would like to see this whole thing go to more like the state standard, where it is very simple, no more rent registry, it is too expensive. And I do think we can come to grounds on that. But we also have to, like, talk about the lady over here that is stuck with a single-family dwelling that is paying $10,000 to get somebody out. That does not seem fair. We do keep our rents low, we have studios for 1750, one-bedrooms for 1950 in South Salinas. If we can't come to an agreement, then we do need to put it out to the vote for the city, for all of the people, and also talk about a regular election, not a special election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Luis Chagojares for Building Healthy Communities. And happy birthday, California, we're 175 years old today. Today, yeah, 175. Check this out, yeah, September 9th, 1850. Before that, from 1821, it was under the Mexican Republic. Before that, since the 1500s, it was under the Spanish Empire. And before that, it was the Esalen, the original people of this region named Ensen. If you haven't been to that beautiful park, Ensen, we all know, it's right over here. Shout out to CCA for helping make, leading that. And, and here we are. Years later, in this whole time, in this span of time, you know, we've had advocacy, advocacy here for our farmworkers, which 55 years ago this summer, and I'm sure some of you remember, the UFW fought to make sure that our farmworker families would have representation. And that's why we're here, to fight, to make sure our tenant families have the right just representation. Thank you.
All right, anyone else from the public? All right, we are going to go ahead, I think I've got half a dozen folks on Zoom, so we will proceed to Zoom. Ms. Wardwell, you're up. Okay, Marisol, you're up.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. A few points. So as Mayor Donahue had said, a community-based solution is the best way to take something as heavy and as important as these ordinance are. I wholeheartedly agree with that. The only way to do this is to take this question to the voters next November, because, no, there are not just two stakeholders. There are actually exactly 163,543 stakeholders. Number two, how many members of the City Council own homes and rent them to help support themselves? I ask that those of you who do, you should all recuse yourselves from this, because this helps to support you. And I don't think you can have that kind of interest when you're dealing with something this important for so many people. Number three, Barajas, I ask you, what are your priorities? And Ali Salasine banning TNT fireworks, please tell me how those things help your constituents' economic suffering. If you had all not repealed the ordinances, there would have been already budgets allocated to these projects. It was you all who changed the city's priorities.
Thank you. Christina.
Good evening, my name is Christina Sotelo. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, working in the community. And I want to share a little bit about how these high rents are creating a financial stress in our families and affecting their mental health. In addition, these increases are forcing families to live in crowded homes with strangers, and in some cases, children have been sexually molested by these strangers because of the, they don't have any privacy. I would like to remind you that in your position, you are here to serve the community, and I urge you to consider our families' mental health and our children's well-being when making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Is it Skylar? Skylar.
Good evening, yeah, okay, great. Good evening, my name is Skylar Spear. I'm a staff attorney with Public Advocates, a nonprofit law firm that specializes in housing and civil rights. I urge you to rescind the repeal of the tenant protection ordinance and to keep the protections unchanged. Repealing the tenant protections would put the city at risk of legal liability. The protections were passed pursuant to the legal requirements to implement the programs the city is committed to in its housing element and develop and implement a specific strategy to affirmatively further fair housing. Repealing the protections risks violating these laws and other fair housing laws. Additionally, I urge you to keep the ordinances unchanged. Changing the protections puts the city at risk of the same liabilities I just stated. Additionally, the signatures gathered for the referendum show that the residents of Salinas want to have a say in whether the protections are repealed or reduced. Reducing them outside of the democratic process puts the city at risk of violating the residents' right to a referendum, a right the courts have said must be jealously protected. I also want to add that landlords have a constitutional right to a fair return that's included in these ordinances for all of the landlords talking about fearing losing profits. They can petition to the city for, to increase the rent beyond what's allowed by the ordinances. Nobody is losing profits from the ordinances as they stand, that's constitutionally not allowed. Regardless of that, I respectfully urge you all to repeal the repeal as requested and leave the protections as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Esther.
Good evening, everybody. Esther Malkin, Monterey County Renters United. I wanted to bring up a couple of points. The rental registry was created to collect data. So if you repeal that, where exactly are you going to collect the data that is pertinent to your city and the residents of your city? So it's premature to have repealed the way that you did. And I also am curious as to how many council members own rental properties. Last meeting, I believe it was, that the California Apartments Association had a representative come out and thank you all for repealing, or maybe the meeting before. There's a reason for that. The California Apartments Association is who contributed to changing this council and all of the fights that are constantly put before any body of elected officials to try and come to some agreement and help both sides. The time for talking has already passed. How much more talking can you do? It is no coincidence that homelessness has increased to record numbers exponentially, just like when the rents have started going up. We have data about that. We have record student homelessness. A renter assistance program is needed in addition to rent stabilization, not as a substitute for it. We need to have both, because to prevent more homelessness, you have to do both. And that also includes building more.
Thank you. Okay, iPad, you're up.
Good evening, Council. My name is Andres Martinez, a student and member of the Salinas Youth Council. This past summer, I dedicated more than 30 hours to community service hours, listening to countless testimonies from families, seniors, and working people in District 1 in Salinas. What I heard was clear. This ordinance is not just any paperwork, it's protection. When renters speak about losing their homes, about unfair treatment, about the fear of not knowing if they'll ever have a roof over their heads tomorrow, these voices matter. This ordinance was designed to give stability and dignity to the people you serve. Repealing it may serve political interest, but restoring it serves the people. Tonight, I urge you to put soft interest aside, listen to the community, and bring this ordinance back. Salinas families are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is it Alma? Yeah, Alma.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alma Loredo. Yo soy organizador de padres en la educación para building healthy communities. Y hoy estoy aquí como residente de Salinas del Distrito 2 y voluntario para protegiendo a los inquilinos de Salinas. Mi trabajo me da la oportunidad de conectarme con las familias en una manera regular y ver y escuchar de primera mano los retos que viven y los retos que tiene vivir en un hogar o estar sin hogar y cómo esto afecta a la educación de los niños. Las familias tienen miedo de quedarse sin hogar, lidiando con todo lo que implica sostener una renta y una familia. Desafortunadamente, nosotros no somos políticos ni somos inversionistas, y muchos de nosotros ni siquiera tenemos dinero para nuestro retiro o para mandar nuestros hijos al colegio. Solo tenemos nuestra voz y la comunidad se ha expresado, y ustedes tienen la responsabilidad de respetar a los 10,000 votantes que firmaron pidiendo que reboquen su revocación. Demuestran su liderazgo y sean responsables de su rol como elegidos.
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Alma Loredo, and I am with BHC, Padres Unidos, and I am a resident of District 2. I am here to protect the tenants of Salinas. I connect with families all the time due to my work. I hear their challenges, I hear their fear. There are fear of living in the house that they live or ending up homeless. This affects the education. Children are in fear of living on the streets. Families also have a hard time paying rent. They don't have the means to pay it. We're not political, we are not, we don't have, we're not investors, we don't really have the money. Some of us don't even have enough money to retire. So the only thing that we have is our voice. And I am asking you with our voice to please respect the 10,000 people that spoke. Please repeal the repeal, be good leaders, and be responsible, and hear the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Audrey.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's important to note that before this ordinance went into effect, there was a lot of talking, but not a lot of listening. Moving forward, that has to change. What we need is balance in this ordinance. True balance that protects tenants while also allowing landlords to responsibly operate their business. As written, the fair rate of return is not workable. No business should have to go to the city and ask permission just to ensure it can continue operating. Yet landlords are forced into a process undermining their ability to manage their housing responsibility. We are also being required to share tenants' personal contact information that is invasive, unnecessary, and damages the trust of landlord-tenant relationships. And the financial burden is extreme. One landlord I spoke to is having to pay a minimum of $3,750 just to have his documents analyzed by the city. That wipes out nearly a year's worth of permitted rent increases. In fact, it takes about 11 months just to recover that cost before a single dollar goes towards maintaining the property. This is not balance, it is not fairness, it is unsustainable. If the goal is to keep tenants in their homes and landlords able to provide housing, then the ordinance must reflect sharing responsibility, not place the burden solely on the property owner. I urge the Council to reconsider these invasive provisions.
Thank you, Audrey. Liz.
That's interesting. First of all, I know you can double your time by going on Zoom and in person, but let me just remind everyone that these ordinances did not appear overnight. They took years to develop. What did kind of happen overnight was that the choice to repeal these ordinances was really taken only after listening to one perspective. I think Protect Salinas renters have shown that there is another side to this issue, and the residents do have a voice, and they cannot be ignored. I need to address a couple of mischaracterizations from some earlier speakers. They mentioned that Protect Salinas renters won't necessarily budge, but I have a fundamental question. What specifically is the Chamber of Commerce asking for? Because that seems to be the other identity, right? If we're going to have a genuine negotiation, shouldn't their demand also be transferred in public? This is a public issue, I cannot stress that enough. This brings me to a larger concern. I feel deeply disrespected that this city is defaulting to the Chamber of Commerce, a non-governmental entity that doesn't represent the majority of Salinas residents, to negotiate on an ordinance that will impact thousands of people. Do they own the landlord voice? The chamber represents business interests, not the diverse voices of our community, as the referendum has shown. Why are we allowing a private organization to drive policy that affects our most vulnerable residents? Thank you.
Adriana.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Adriana García. Trabajo para el distrito de Salinas High como oficial de seguridad. Día a día me toca ver el impacto que tiene en la comunidad las necesidades de los hogares de mis estudiantes. Muchos de ellos tienen que compartir hoy día, familias, hasta cinco personas en una sola casa. Comprendo que estamos viviendo momentos difíciles en nuestra economía, pero muchos de ustedes han hecho maravillosas cosas por la comunidad. No permitan que su legado se mire manchado por una mala decisión que puede afectar a la comunidad por la que muchas veces ustedes han liderado diferentes campañas para ayudarnos. Les pido que hagan su revocación de su decisión, ya que esto impactaría de manera muy mala para la comunidad de clase media, dejando a muchas de estas familias homeless y afectando más así a la comunidad en otras áreas, impactando a los estudiantes en tener que abandonar muchos de ellos sus estudios para dedicarse a trabajar y apoyar a su familia para tener un hogar digno. Por favor, les pido que hagan su revocación y tomen en cuenta las necesidades de cada una de las familias de su comunidad. Una comunidad que siente...
Thank you. All right. No, 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 that's fine, it takes me that long.
It's just easier to take notes over there. Okay, good night. My name is Adriana García, and I work as a guard duty at Salinas High. And every day I see how house issues impact my students. I see how my students have to share houses with five families, and it's really hard. I know we're all going through financial times that are very difficult and challenging, but you, as a city council, have done very good things. So don't let your legacy be stained by the bad decision. This decision is going to affect the community. Please show your leadership, because you have helped this community with many campaigns. So please do the smart thing and repeal the repeal. This is going to impact a lot of people, middle class, a lot of families. A lot of children are afraid to end up homeless. And the thing is that if the parents can't afford the rent, many children are going to have to stop studying, and they're going to have to go to work to help their family have a roof over their head. So please repeal the repeal and consider the need of all the families.
Thank you. All right, Marcella. I can't read the small print, so I apologize if I didn't get that right. Go ahead.
Sí, buenas tardes, miembros del consilio. Mi nombre es Maricela, y soy residente del Distrito 6. Y hoy estoy aquí también hablando por las ordenanzas, que reboquen su revocación de quitar las ordenanzas. Y hoy voy a compartir un poquito de... Y hoy voy a compartir un poquito de la experiencia que he visto. Tengo una sobrina que en este año ella salió de una famili... tiene una familia y ha sufrido violencia doméstica por parte de su familia. Y ella ha estado rentando hoteles como $300 por dos días. Y ella se ha comunicado con su trabajador social, no ha tenido respuesta. Y creo que esta era una esperanza para ella como las ordenanzas para que ella pudiera tener una vivienda estable, ¿no? Entonces creo que eso ha afectado mucho y lo digo también porque estamos en el 2025 y todavía está pasando esta situación de... Ella está en riesgo de quedar en la calle. Ha tenido amigos que sí la han podido apoyar, pero en casi todas las casas que ha estado han limitado mucho el tiempo que ella...
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Marisela and I'm resident from District 6. And I'm here today to please ask you to not repeal... to repeal the repeal. I'm here to share an experience that I know. I have a niece that she has suffered a lot in her family. She suffered domestic violence, so she had to leave her home. And she has had to be living in hotels, paying $300 for two days stay. So this... these ordinance were kind of like a hope for her to be able to find a stable home. I think that it's really hard for her. It's 2025. She's in risk of ending up homeless. There have been some friends that have been able to help her and have had her in her home, but they limit the time that she can stay with them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will close public comment and Councilmember Barajas, you wanted to speak?
Sure, I'll go ahead and...
So we'll start with you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start. I'm gonna clarify. I'm gonna start by making my comments in Spanish and then I will make a direct transliteration into English, all right? So, esta tarde, al considerar el punto 25-384, quiero ser muy claro sobre mi posición. Yo propongo que se derogue la ordenanza 26-87 conocida como la ordenanza de derogación. Para mí esto se trata de responsabilidad fiscal y liderazgo. Gastar entre medio millón de dólares hasta 1.6 millones de dólares, ya sea a través de una elección especial o incluso en la próxima elección general, no me parece una decisión fiscalmente responsable de nuestra ciudad en este momento. Estamos hablando de fondos de los contribuyentes y dadas las realidades financieras que enfrentamos, no puedo en conciencia apoyar una opción que agotaría nuestros recursos. Dicho esto, también quiero reconocer que entiendo cómo esta decisión puede afectar a los propietarios. Los costos operativos por sí solos aumentan entre un 5 y 6%, incluyendo un aumento anual de 4% en los servicios públicos. Y hasta Chispa ha señalado que ellos mismos no podrían operar con aumentos anuales menores al 5%. Sus preocupaciones son reales y no las tomó ligeramente. Sabemos que las propiedades de múltiples unidades se valoran en gran medida según los ingresos por rentas, lo que impacta directamente la capacidad de un propietario a acceder al capital. Cuando se reducen los ingresos, también se reduce la capacidad de financiar mejoras que lleven a las propiedades a cumplir con los códigos o incluso para ir más allá y modernizar las viviendas de manera que nuestra comunidad necesita. Por eso creo que debemos reunir nuevamente al Comité Asesor Técnico, TAG por sus siglas en inglés. Como parte de este esfuerzo, quiero que creamos un mecanismo de reporte mediante el cual los propietarios e inversionistas puedan informar a la ciudad si y cuándo han perdido ingresos, como esas ordenanzas han afectado su capacidad de acceder al capital y qué significa esto para las condiciones y disponibilidad de vivienda en Salinas. Al mismo tiempo, hay acciones que este consejo puede emprender fuera del TAG que no requieren de manera inmediata o directa cambios a ninguna de las ordenanzas. Por ejemplo, podemos implementar mecanismos de reporte para que los propietarios inversionistas puedan declarar a la ciudad si han sufrido pérdidas de ingresos y cómo las ordenanzas han afectado a su acceso al capital. El consejo también podría incorporar métricas y puntos de datos que permitan a la ciudad monitorear cercanamente los cambios del mercado y realizar ajustes en consecuencia como parte del nuevo tablero de vivienda municipal. Esos pasos nos proporcionarán información más precisa sobre los efectos reales de las políticas sin necesidad de enmendar las ordenanzas. Seamos claros sobre algo más. Sí estamos viviendo dentro de las condiciones del mercado, pero este mercado no es una fuerza extranjera. Es el resultado directo de políticas y de falta de acción constante hacia el desarrollo de vivienda aquí en Salinas. La severa situación en la que nos encontramos es en muchos sentidos de nuestra propia creación y es nuestra responsabilidad de enfrentarla de manera honesta y constructiva. Para mí esto no es el final de esta conversación, sino es el inicio de un esfuerzo más enfocado para reunir a propietarios, inquilinos y miembros de la comunidad en un mismo espacio y elaborar soluciones que sean viables, justas y sostenibles. Al derogar la ordenanza, nos damos espacio para mejorar, enmendar y adaptarnos mientras protegemos la salud fiscal de la ciudad y honramos nuestra responsabilidad a los contribuyentes. Y quiero ser muy claro, estoy listo para actuar esta noche. Just repeat that very quickly in English. So, this evening, as we take up item 25-384, I want to be clear about my position. I move that repeal ordinance number 2687, the so-called repeal ordinance, end quote. For me, this comes down to fiscal responsibility and leadership. Spending anywhere from half a million dollars to upwards of 1.6 million, whether through a special election or even at the next general election, does not strike me as a sound fiscal decision for our city at this time. These are taxpayer dollars and given the financial realities we face, I cannot in good conscience support an option that would drain our limited resources. That said, I also want to acknowledge that I understand how this decision may impact landlords. Operational costs alone increased between 5 and 6% year-over-year with 4% year-over-year increases in utility costs alone. And even Chispa stated that they could not operate below a 5% annual increase. Their concerns are real and I do not take them lightly. We know that multi-unit properties are valued based on rents collected as a major factor, which directly impacts an owner's ability to access capital. When revenues are reduced, so too is the ability to finance the improvements that bring properties up to code or even to go beyond code requirements and modernize housing in ways our community needs. That's why I believe that we must reconvene the tenant advisory committee or the technical advisory committee. As part of that effort, I want us to create a reporting mechanism through which property owners and investors can declare to the city if and when they have lost income, how these ordinances are impacting their ability to access capital and what it means for the housing conditions and availability of housing in Salinas. At the same time, there are actions that this council can pursue outside... Sorry, losing my spot. Outside of the tag that do not immediately or directly call for changes of any of the ordinances. For example, we can create the reporting mechanisms through which property owners can... investors can declare to the city if and when they have lost income, how these ordinances are impacting their ability to access capital and what that means for housing conditions and availability in Salinas. The council could also incorporate metrics and data points that allow the city to closely monitor market changes and make adjustments accordingly as part of the new housing dashboard. These steps will give us better insight into the actual effects of policy without amending the ordinances themselves. Let's also be clear about something else. Yes, we are living within the conditions of the market, but this market is not some external or foreign force. It's the direct result of policies and a lack of consistent attention and action towards housing development in Salinas. The severe situation that we find ourselves in today is in many ways of our own making and it's our responsibility to face that honestly and constructively. For me, this is not the end of that conversation. It's only the beginning of a more focused effort to bring landlords, tenants and community members together in the same place to craft solutions that are workable, fair and sustainable. By repealing the ordinance, we leave ourselves room to improve, amend and adapt while also safeguarding the city's fiscal health and honoring our responsibility to taxpayers. And just to close, I want to be very clear. I'm ready to take action tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera.
Thank you. You know, I think everybody spoke very well today, even though there's different ways of viewing this. Reality is we're a community. I just want to share two things before I speak on my point here. The seat that I'm sitting here, it belongs to the people in District 2 to represent the entire city of Salinas. The seat here does not belong to me. So as your public servant, if you threaten me or you remember me, every four years we go through elections. And if you can do a better job, I welcome you to do that because that's what we need is we need people to engage in making this a better community. So please don't threaten. This is your seat. And if you feel you can do a better job than any one of us up here, November comes up every four years. And I mean that with sincerity. The other thing is, you know, sometimes as landlords... I remember when my mother used to tell us, "I want you to go to school to be a better person and make a good life for yourself." And now we see people doing very well for themselves and we're thrashing them because they got a lot of properties or whatever it is. Or they're successful. I think we all want the best in life. Let me just quickly tell you about District 2. 70% of District 2 are renters. 30% of District 2 cannot vote for different reasons. Out of the eight to 10 houses that are sold in District 2, eight are bought for investment and out of the other two, either one, two or three families buy it to live in it. Think about that. That's the reality. Fiscal responsibility, leadership, a lot of us talk about emotion. But put yourself in the young lady's place that spoke in this chamber. She said she had to choose between continuing her studies in college or waiting, put her studies in hold because she needed to help her parents pay the rent. That's real. She wasn't asking for charity. She was asking, "This is my real life." You know, I think one of the things that happens here today, I'm like Councilmember Barajas, it's roll. If we want to vote on this, let's vote on it. But how are we going to impact the people that we serve? I heard two things today. Give us one more opportunity to see if we can come to consensus. And Mayor, and if they don't, then we're going to play hardball. The sad thing about it, we're going to spend a lot of money that we don't have, but you're challenging us to make a decision. I heard some people say, "You guys are talking too much and not doing enough, so it's time to make a decision." Oh, and before I continue being judged, next on the 20th, 30th in two weeks, I have a family responsibility, so I'll be on Zoom, but I'll be here, so please don't judge me that I'm gone, okay? I'll be on Zoom. But I have a family responsibility I have to attend to. But I'm ready to vote. But I want to be able to vote, just like Councilmember Barajas says, in clear conscience and to say we gave the community the opportunity to come together. And if not, then we have to do it. Does that make sense? And I want to... Mr. Jacob, I mean, Mr. Sandoval, you spoke very well today on behalf of the Protect the Renters. And you know what, Mr. Adam, I have the deepest respect. To Amy, I have the deepest respect as well. Mr. Leonard, I just met you and if you guys can come together again and see what happens, we're gonna... I think we're getting ready to vote. And to my colleagues, you're going to be threatened. I'm talking to all six of you. Vote the way you feel you need to vote to represent everybody, not just our buddies or whatever we think. But the reality is that we need to put politics aside and do the best we can. Because guess what? When we vote, to some you're going to be the champion and to others, I'm sorry, but we have to make a decision. And to all of you today, I want to thank you for being here because I think we're all tired. We really are. But this is democracy. I hear democracy. And then when we vote, we take it out to the... let me tell you what democracy is going to look like. There are some people that are going to throw big money into this thing, big money. Then there's going to be other people walking the streets, knocking on doors, lots of energy. And then I'm going to think, man, those millions of dollars that we spent on this, we could have just fixed up the Little League parks. But we don't do that. But we are ready to make a decision. So to all of you and to the families that are struggling with the rents, I hope with whatever decision is being made here, I hope your life gets better and I mean that. So, Mayor, I don't know if we want to give it one more round or... I'm ready to go. If you folks are ready to vote, I'm going to look to some...
I already made a motion to repeal ordinance 2687.
And can you tell me what your motion is?
Yeah, can we state the motion? I'll go ahead and restate the motion. I move to repeal ordinance number 2687, the repeal ordinance. Do I have the support for a second?
I'm going to make a substitute motion. The substitute motion is to repeal the repeal and include that a committee, a group of people that are already talking, be established, that already is established, to develop a fair and inclusive public process by which the four ordinances will be evaluated and modified if you so choose to, with the understanding that by the 23rd we will vote.
I'll second that. Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval.
Well, first, I want to recognize all the youth who came out tonight because us adults and older folks up here are making decisions that'll impact you. So I want to commend you for speaking tonight. And there was a gentleman on Zoom, I believe his name is Andres, who I had the pleasure to meet at our Youth Council. Actually told me that he got involved with the city because he saw what was going on with rent stabilization. He wanted to be part of the process, be part of the solution, so I want to recognize him for that. I hope one day he runs for office. And then my question would be, how will his voice be heard in this? You know, we heard of two different groups and two opposing views, but how will the youth be included in these conversations? I had the honor of actually signing these ordinances into the books almost exactly a year ago. As a matter of fact, I think it was September 24th. And at that time, with the leadership of Councilmember Osornio at the time, he pushed to revisit these in exactly a year to see the data so we could make better informed decisions to see how they were working. We're here a year and we still don't have the data. And so now we're being asked to make a decision again without the data. My frustration is for months, I asked the City Council to engage the community, to educate the community, because a lot of the stuff that gets discussed tonight, there's maybe some misinformation from both sides and maybe not a clear understanding. And we haven't had that. So we're here again without that engagement, without that education piece. I do want to acknowledge Echo Housing that has stepped up to provide these workshops across the city, which I hope is not too late because they're very crucial for everybody to understand. You know, I've never... I don't think I've met Mr. Leonard before, so, you know, I'd ask that the... I hear there's some recommendations. I'd ask you to make those public so the community can see what the position of the chamber is. I think there's an opportunity here. As we talk about open dialogue and transparency, I think I saw... I did see part of the press conference for Protect Salinas and they said they did not want to negotiate behind closed doors. I think that this is a unique opportunity. If we really want to be transparent, these conversations should be inclusive of all the community. A lot of this stuff could have happened six months ago, a lot of this. The council didn't push for any engagement at that point. I am a little concerned. I heard Mr. Pineda mention that he's... he felt uneasy about the change. At the last council meeting we had... At the last council meeting, we had Mr. Adam say, you know, "We've got to rip it off like a Band-Aid and call for a special election." Now there's this big change to "Let's work together." My concern... Adam, yes, that... Yes, that Adam. My concern is this. We could convene a tax committee. Great, we could have a robust process. But at the end of the day, the council decides. I heard conversations about making good fiscal decisions. Just want to run through some numbers. So if this election was to happen, we kind of heard about $500,000, but it wasn't clear if this particular item was going to cost $500,000. In staff reports previously, we heard that this rent stabilization affects about 18,000 units. But let's just say that we're able to save... I'm here, actually, no. Well, staff report said it affected about 18,000 multifamily residential units. If this ordinance saves about $1,100 per unit, that's just about $20 million that residents of Salinas are saving. If 25% of that money, if the residents only spent 25% of that money in local stores, and we collected the tax revenue, that would cover half a million dollars for the election. The mayor created a housing ad hoc committee the moment that there was an announcement for a referendum. If there was that true intention to be working together, then there could have been somebody with opposing views to that. But it's not. It's not made up of that. One, it meets behind closed doors. I heard Councilmember Barreras mentioning in an interview that they were going to be discussing possibly rezoning or looking at what those conversations should be made in public. So I'd ask the mayor, if that is your intention to bring the community together, one, those conversations should be public, and there should be all views represented on those committees. But ask the mayor, would you consider appointing Councilmember Barrera to one of those, to that committee? As opposed to having just one view represented on that committee?
I certainly would, certainly would consider that. Yes, the answer is I would consider it. And I'll address some of the things you're saying in my comments, if that's okay.
Thank you. I'm struggling, to be honest. I'm struggling. I called my wife earlier, a little outside of work, and I said, "What should I do?" Because I hear the Protect Salinas folks saying, "Let's repeal the repeal, and let's work together." Then I remember collecting signatures from people who actually were against the rent stabilization, who signed this referendum. And I said, "Why would you sign this? You are staunch..." I mean, they came and they spoke, and they railed against this. And they said, "Well, because I believe in the democratic process. I believe the voters of Salinas should make a decision." I struggle. I told my wife, "My honey, what should I do?" Now, then I come to the council, and there are just a few landlords and just a few residents who said, "Take it to the voters." Gentlemen right over here. And so I struggle. I want to be optimistic. I know sometimes I'm very leery of things that just don't sit right with me. But I want you to understand, we heard somebody from Centro Binacional talking about how this affects their families, who do not vote, by the way, for myriad of reasons. I mean, there are people who may make the decision between what kind of food they eat. I spoke to a nurses' union, and they told me, actually, there's people who are deciding whether or not to ration their medication. $150 a month may not seem like a lot to a lot of people, but it could impact a lot of families already struggling. But I don't, I'm struggling. But I want people to understand that if the council, and I don't foresee it happening, but if the council was to say to go towards an election, yeah, there could be a good political message to say there was one council member out there who wanted to spend half a million dollars of our resources. But this is going to affect possibly $20 million in the residents of Salinas's pockets. Is half a million dollars worth that? Probably. I heard people say we only had 10% of Salinas's voice, or 10% of voters. I don't know how we're supposed to represent all the people who signed the referendum with a group of folks. I don't know. I mean, what I foresee or what I wish, which, by the way, community engagement is so important, which is why I've been pushing it since day one of being in office, true community engagement. And I also wonder, I remember it was Ms. Swenson who shared with me that she asked one of the council members, "Well, how can we trust you? How can we trust? Because there's been broken trust." And I don't know the answer to that. I struggle to not think about the campaign contributions and sign locations and endorsements. I struggle. I have had an issue with people making decisions. And I heard only one person address the Chamber of Commerce, which, by the way, does a lot of great things. And actually, I have not commended them for making a lot of the changes they made last year towards community engagement and addressing some of the concerns from previous years. But it's still a selective group of people you have to pay a membership fee to be part of. Why defer to them? I just, and I get it. It's a good starting point, Mayor. It is a good starting point. It's an established committee. But I would like, and ask Mr. Leonard, would you make those proposals public? The chamber has made to Protect Salinas, and the same thing to Protect Salinas. Would you make your counteroffers public so the public can be aware of that? You have? Okay, great. And I'm going to defer to my colleagues, because I know there's been a motion made. And I'd also like to ask my colleagues if the request from folks... One, there was requests from both sides to wait till next... the next council meeting to make a decision. And then there was an ask from the Protect Salinas renters to say, "Let's wait a year to make a data-driven decision." Is the council up for that? Or is the council thinking of making changes sooner rather than later? I'd like to know, because that will affect my decision.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's hear from the rest of the council. Margaret?
Before I get started, I wanted to ask clarification on Mr. Barrera's substitute motion. I just want to make sure I understand it completely. Yeah, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. Let me read it, because I want to make sure I say it correctly.
No, it was, he was first, he did the substitute.
By the way, this motion is going into the archives of the City Council. Substitute motion to repeal the repeal and include that a committee be established to develop, which is already there, a fair and inclusive public process by which the four ordinances will be evaluated and modified, if they so choose to.
Okay, so if I may, Councilmember Barrera, that substitute motion doesn't function appropriately. What I think you're trying to get to is a two-week delay on the council's consideration of the repeal ordinance. By wrapping the two together, you're saying that you want to repeal the ordinance, but then also have a conversation over the next two weeks, and those two things just can't function together. So if what you're asking for is to bring this matter back on September 23rd to give the community more time to have a dialogue, then that, I think, would be the more appropriate substitute motion.
That's what it is.
That's what I, that's what I seconded.
Yeah, and you can third that, the attorney. And with, and for that.
With, and the second presumed that the groups that originally started talking, rate the process, the motions get considered with... So that's what I seconded. So essentially, it's a...
It is.
Yeah, okay. You're welcome.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping to hear. Okay. So, yes, difficult decision. I am in favor of definitely giving ourselves a fighting chance to... With more information and another chance for the groups to meet together. My understanding was the chamber was more of a mediator. I don't think that they were, you know, part of the decision-making. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I, I thought that was more of their role because of the fact that they are, you know, a business organization. So, but they're, they can be as unbiased as, you know, possible. So, yes, I definitely think we need more time. I want to let the process play out. There are trust issues. I would hope that those of you that are in the room and those that are on Zoom or in the audience will take this seriously, because I agree with my other council members. We are going to take action on the 23rd, one way or the other. And so I'm really hoping that you'll hold yourselves accountable by coming forward and really bargaining in good faith and bringing something out. And there's always going to have to be compromise in that type of situation. That's what a negotiation is, is compromise. And you have to be willing to take that risk. I also wanted to echo what Mr. Barrera said about respect and demeanor, because I don't appreciate being threatened by members of the public speaking that with the tone of, you know, "We will come after you. We will keep this up." I know you're good organizers, and I know you're going to fight like heck. No matter what happens in two weeks, you guys are going to, you're going to go at it. And I know you will, and I think you have to. I mean, that's what people are expecting from you, right? To represent them. So I respect that. But I just want respect up here as well. I think all of us have respected the public comment and the process, and we just ask for the same respect in return. There was a comment made about taking back our city. In my opinion, it's not anyone's city. It's 170,000 citizens' city. Each of us has a stake in that, an equal stake. So it's not anybody's city. It's our city. And that's why I think our mayor is right on point in saying that we need to work together to move forward as a community, as a city, not as separate groups. So I support that 100%. That's why, you know, I signed up for this job. As, you know, difficult as it can be at times, I really believe that we can unify and move forward in a better direction. Otherwise, I wouldn't be sitting up here. And I think that's, I think that kind of concludes my comments. But I support the two weeks to really put it to the test.
Thank you, Margaret. Gloria?
I'd like to echo your comments, Councilmember DeRigo. I would also like to see the two groups come together and find some kind of compromise, because we are a community. And, yes, as difficult as it is, yes, come together and let's find a compromise. But yes, come back in two weeks. I support that.
Aurelia?
I'm not going to be voting in support of the motion, nor am I going to be voting in support of the substitute motion. In terms of a solution, you know, I came here tonight really hoping that we would be able to come to a solution. I mean, really, that's what I wanted. You know, what I envisioned was, you know, two groups coming together, having conversations and listening to one another. On a couple of occasions, I've talked about reflective listening and how that's structured. And I was really hoping to see that. You know, over the last couple of months, you know, I've been hoping to see that and really haven't. I was really hoping that the two groups would be able to come to a compromise and come to an understanding of what it's like to be a renter and to be on the opposite side as a landlord or property management company. We're all living through real costs, increasing costs of living. And it's important that we understand how that affects all of us. I think it's pretty clear tonight. It sounds like there's just a lot of mistrust. There's, you know, folks have talked about their mistrust with the City Council, talked about mistrust amongst the organizations and groups and one another in general. Really wish I could bring, you know, again, that harmony and understanding. I don't know if that's realistic. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to see both groups come to the table. And I went with an open ear. And like some other council members, you know, have seen the disrespect. And one example that comes up is, you know, at one of our previous council meetings, we had a whole group just stand up and turn their backs on us because they did not want to hear what we had to say. And I always operate with an open door and willing to listen to anyone. At the last council meeting, I said I would be available to meet. The only two individuals that reached out to me was Dr. John Silva and Dr. Rodriguez. And we set time to meet and listen to one another. You know, the important part that they brought up was the mental health aspect of all this. And I understand that. And as we all know, there is a big mental health crisis going on. And housing availability, housing affordability contributes to that. But then again, I don't, I don't want to force the two groups to come together. You know, I asked that at the last meeting. And I don't want to force the two groups to come together when there's not, I don't see that willingness or ability to listen to one another. So the speaker tonight brought up a very important point. It was Marisol. It's not about the two groups. It's about the 163,543 voters in the city of Salinas. And I also did hear from another speaker, repeal the repeal or let voters decide. And I know that people will bring up the argument regarding resources on both sides, people power versus money power. But at the end of the day, we owe that to our Salinas residents. The 163,543, those registered voters who are registered to vote to make an informed decision based on the ordinances. The language has been written. Regardless of what site you sit on, there's now going to be that responsibility to share that with them and let them know what the city has counseled decide. Again, I'm not voting in favor of the motion or the substitute motion. I'm hoping that we will vote them down, because I have another motion that I would like to make. I'm not making the motion, but let the voters decide in November. A special election, I agree. Special election would be costly. But the reality is, an election does cost money. And the cost of democracy is also real. And the Elections Department, they've calculated that. If people don't want us to make the decision, if the opposing groups don't want to see each other make the decision, then we take it to the people. And we take it to the residents of the city of Salinas. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, my wife talked to me, too. So I, and that conversation will not be transparent. I, um... I second the motion because I heard a number of things tonight. And one of the things, I understand we're going to be here two weeks from now. Every single option that's been explored, you know, whether it's a general election, whether it's just a straight repeal, or the... whether it's just a straight repeal or the ability to modify, none of those things go away with, with a repeal. What concerns me about that is even if we repeal, there's still a concern the council will do something again. And Andrew asked, what are you, what are you thinking about, Mayor, beyond this point? What I'm thinking about is, I continue to believe that we can find a way to resolve this and I at least want to try one more time at, at this point because I, I have heard everyone acknowledge they're not perfect. So I'm not particularly in favor of putting something that everybody agrees is not perfect, particularly technical, on a ballot. And I think, I think there's an obligation to avoid spending taxpayer dollars if at all possible. Now, it could be what kind of emerges in the next two weeks is, let's, let's, let's go, let's go ahead and have a vote. But, you know, a couple, a couple of things, and I just want to point this out, whoever, the assembling of the groups were individuals and organizations that said, "I will assemble either representatives, subject matter experts." The chamber is not mediating anything. They are not determining anything. They, they, they volunteered to help assemble. That's it. They, they weren't even at the table. They were in the room, but not at the table. And I, and they were transparent on, hey, here's five things we'd like to talk about. Five things. And frankly, the number one item in terms of, in terms of the cap was the most significant thing. So I will just share with you what my general thinking was, that if the group happened to say, you know, "We can work on that and we want to talk about the other things together," whatever that process looks like, I, I'd probably be perfectly prepared to repeal and trust, trust the group. And, and I'm hearing people are having a difficult time with trust, but even if we do a straight repeal, we didn't solve the trust issue. And the only way you solve trust issues, and, and I regret that I didn't sit down with the housing coalition earlier to talk, be face to face, to be in the room. I, I regret that because, you know, and, and Chago, every time I see you, I always, you always tell me, "Win-win." Give me, you really have arguably one of the better smiles in the entire city. And, yeah, and I know you know. And, 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 and I always tell you, you know, "I really like you." But we would, we don't know each other as well as we should. When people know each other, better things happen. And so what I want to do over the next couple of weeks, and you know, depending upon how we all look at time, two weeks is either a heck of a long time or, boy, it comes fast. And when you're my age, they all come fast. But talking this through one more time, getting an agreement on the main point and trusting, trusting the other things can get worked out, I think we owe the community that one last look, that if we can get this right, we probably can work together to get the other things right. Because I, I don't think anybody, and I'm, I'm very, very serious when I tell you, I understand how important this issue is, the affordability issue. And frankly, you know, besides congratulations for the job you did, it, it was absolutely, the notion of your work, it's just jarring to throw cold water in our face and go, "Hey, you better pay attention to how tough the affordability issues in this community." You have everybody's full attention. And, you know, I mean, believe me, behind the line, it's like, what are we doing on housing? How fast are we going? Are we in a bottleneck? What do we need to do? I mean, those, good things are happening because of your hard work. So let's see if an additionally good thing can happen, we can begin to build, build some trust and work together. Let's try it one more time. I, I think that's worth it. And, and I understand we'll make it, we'll make a decision on the 23rd if, if, if the motion passes. But I think that can be a better, better decision. And, you know, Councilmember Sandoval, I, I appreciate your, your comments about transparent. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. And I'll tell you, I'm just kind of a believer of, let, let's just kind of set up the straw man so we can be transparent about what we're thinking about. When, when there's, and, and that's one of the reasons, you know, choose seven, choose, I don't care if people choose 20. I don't care if you have open meetings. What, what we'd like is for, to talk and see if we can get, get, get agreement on a point. Because, because I will tell you, on that particular point, that's not a data conversation. Because it, it falls into the category of, you know, sometimes, you know, my favorite phrase in ag is, "It depends." It depends on the landlord, it depends on the situation. There are no data points for "it depends." So the, the question is, can, can, in my mind, the five points were laid out, there were five points, you know, can we make progress on the big one and trust the other four? I mean, I think this issue of getting some trust, working together, getting to know each other a little better, I think that's worth two more weeks of, of our time. So that, and, and, and as, and the, the other thing I, I, I do want to say, there, there is no value in re, I think every, you know, I think we've all, we've all learned a, a thing or two, but, but I do want to point out, and I want, I want to pick up on Margaret's comment a little bit. You know, as you might imagine, it's, it's not particularly enjoyable to sit up here and, you know, have, have everyone take, 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 take a shot at you and you can't, and you can't talk back. And I don't want to talk back, I want to listen. But what, what I do want to point out is, you know, when Councilmember Barreras made the motions several months ago, we didn't just repeal it and say, "Oh, well." We, we suggested four, four things. You know, rather than the rent stabilization for a certain percentage of housing, we, we honestly felt, and it wasn't meant to be rental assistance that like, "Yeah, we'll throw a few bucks at the deal." We, we had every intention of seeing if we could pursue a multi-year, multimillion-dollar rental assistance program while we really began to push hard, which was the second part of Councilmember Barreras, Barras's motion. I want to see what we're doing on housing and I want that to be visible and transparent that we're moving. And we fully understood the know your rights. Because the thing I will tell you, listening to all the testimony over the last several months, is a lot of people didn't know their rights, so that important, that really is important. And we, we heard people had limited resources to pursue those rights, but we also heard a lot of people say, describe things that violated even state law. So this know your rights campaign really, really is, really is important. And, you know, and, and there are some state, state protections. So, so our, our feeling was, there was a, a better path. It wasn't just, "Oh, we don't like that Cia." And, and people of goodwill can differ, and obviously that has been the case. But what, what, what I would, what I would like to see and the reason I seconded the motion and I hope, I hope, I hope it carries, nothing is off the table, including, you know, we could decide in March we wanted a, a general election. You know, but I think the best thing to do is take these next two weeks, build some trust and see if we can, if we can get some resolution around the key point, the, the key point. So, but I don't think that's for us to micromanage from here, from this dais today. It's, we would, we would like to see if it's possible, in my mind, to get a community solution and take, near term, so we can get on to the, this issue remains important and has our full intention. But we have got to also, as the, as the council, get to the other critical opportunities and challenges in, in the community. So with, with that, if, Chris, if you have any final comments, I'm going to go ahead and call for.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just want to, one more time, make sure that we're all clear as to what we're voting on. So the substitute motion is essentially to continue the city council's determination of the two options, to repeal or submit the ordinance to the voters until September 23rd, to give the two groups that have been meeting an additional two weeks to meet, to try and come to some consensus. So that's what the action is tonight, and that's the motion that's on the table. I want to make sure that that's clear. On the 23rd, this council will have to choose between those two options. You will have to put an end to this referendum process by either repealing the repeal ordinance or submitting the ordinance to the voters. That will be in front of you on September 23rd and that can is not getting kicked anymore.
And so thank you for that clarification. I also think it's important to understand what it really means to take this to the voters. It's what's really going to be in front of the voters, whether repeal ordinance, whether it becomes effective or not. That's what's in front of the voters. So please understand what that means. That means that whatever the voters decide, that they're deciding whether the repeal of the ordinance is, is effective or not. That's the question before the voters, it's the referendum process. It's a very narrow, specific legislative act that's being, that absolutely does not mean that this conversation stops if the community wants to continue on this conversation. That does not mean that there cannot be other things that are done in the future. So I think it's just important to understand that. I think part of the councils and some of the communication is building this trust because that's going to have to continue because we're going to have to continue to address this issue. So I just think it's important to understand when we're talking about an election, absolutely the referendum process is clearly a, an approach that can be taken by the citizens and residents of a community. And I also want to clarify citizens and residents. We have 165,000 residents, not all of them are citizens. So I think it's also important to understand what that distinction is. So as you, as we move forward with this conversation and we, and the decision is, because I've heard it for election, please understand what that means. Setting it for election, you're only taking action under repeal, whether it's effective or not. That does not mean that this conversation ends. Right? So, so just as you're tabbing this conversation and communication, I just think it's important to characterize that because that actually, I think, over time, can really set the, the environment for really meaningful communication. And I think the other lesson learned from us citizen, from a city's perspective is, we have to spend a lot more attention on what we mean by public engagement. Because there's been a lot of conversation about what happened and didn't happen, and I think it's important for the council to understand, as we move forward from staff's perspective, we're going to be a lot more clear about what exactly do we mean by public engagement and how we're going to do it. Because I, and there was a very robust effort, but maybe it wasn't robust enough. So as we move forward, I just want to be very clear about that. There was public engagement. The city did a phenomenal job in trying to engage the public. Maybe it wasn't enough. I've now worked in a few other communities and I can tell you the public engagement process for this that I walked into was fairly significant. Now, maybe, maybe it wasn't structured the way it needed to be structured. So I think that's the lesson learned from the city's perspective, as we move forward and really debate these really tough policy calls. But I just think it's important from staff's perspective to clarify what an election really means and what the expectation be in two weeks. Thank you.
All right. With that, those comments, thank you, both of you. Please call.
One clarifying question for the maker of the motion.
Sure.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Councilmember Barrera. Part of your motion was to, in two weeks, kind of receive some sort of update from the folks having these meetings. How do you envision receiving that report? Is it kind of just going to be like what was done today in public comment where we give both sides 10 minutes? Or is it a report? Or are we having like a staff member there that's present that's going to provide like a third-party opinion of what, what transpired in those meetings? Or are we kind of just leaving it up to the group?
I, I, I think what we did tonight, we, we, we would determine if it's, if they want to do a joint.
Mayor, can you turn on your mic, please?
I'm sorry. If, Councilmember Barrera, what I, what I would, or the answer to your question, I, I would think we would either ask the two groups if they can make a joint statement, that's great, and they would be part of the, the presentation to council, or if it's, our group is here, our group is there, but prior to the council meeting, just like we, instead of preparing staff, basically, we're going to ask, ask the groups to come forward, what do we got? And then we're, we're going to have to make some decisions.
I have a follow-up question to that then. So how is the motion on the floor at this time, which is not a substitute because it's a sole motion on the floor, given that mine didn't receive a second and neither did Councilmember Salazar's? How is postponing this to the 23rd and asking folks to reconvene any different from moving forward with the repeal, the repeal tonight, and then subsequently asking the tax to reconvene with recommendations if we are negotiating a good day to clarify?
Let me ask the city attorney to jump in.
So the motion on the floor is to continue that council's consideration of the two options, just the repeal or submitting the ordinance, the repeal ordinance to the voters for two weeks to give the groups an additional two weeks to discuss. Whatever shape or form they decide to present that to the council, I think is up to them. So that's the motion that's on the floor that received the second.
Yes. And so, yeah, time to call for the question. All right, Patty.
Councilmember Barreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember De Rigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. All right, and thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And we're going to take a break. It is 6:00 to 9:00, and so we'll try and be back here promptly, kind of sort of right on time at 9:00 o'clock. Maybe 9:04. All right, we're going to get going here. We, we appear to resemble a quorum and others will wander in. Good, good news, it's, it's on all my calendars.
Anybody else see the wake-up call?
But that doesn't necessarily mean anything. Yeah, I've got it right here where it's perfectly, at 9:15, I'll realize, oh, I was supposed to be somewhere at 9:00. All right. Jose, you can slowly begin to make your way to the podium. Yeah, no, yeah, no, don't speed up. All right, we'll go ahead and resume. All right, we are going to talk about MOU's with the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. Okay? You're on.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jose Arriola, Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here with my colleague, Crystal Garcia, Community Development Analyst, who's been my partner on this project. And in October of last year, the city of Salinas was invited into the Financial Empowerment Center's academy. This is a 15-month planning process broken into two phases. The first phase provides partners with an overview of the FEC model and tools, tools to explore the feasibility of launching a FEC in their locality. Earlier this year, the city of Salinas was selected to move to Phase Two, where we received more in-depth technical assistance and access to a $20,000 grant to support the FEC planning process. Today, we ask that you accept this planning grant to keep us moving towards implementation. But first, we'll hear from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, who've helped dozens of cities successfully launch and sustain FECs. With their support and with our collective leadership, Salinas can be part of a national movement that delivers real, measurable results for our residents. And so today, we have with us Rose Harvey and Fernando Villas Senor from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, who will provide the presentation.
Rose?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you very much for having us today. My name is Rose Harvey. I'm the manager of FEC Innovations at Cities for Financial I'm the manager of FEC Innovations at Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, and I've been delighted to work with the city the past several months to plan to launch an exciting new public service that I will tell you about. First, I want to briefly thank our funders who make our national work possible. A little bit about the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. We are a national philanthropic organization based in New York, and we work with cities and counties all across the country to design, launch, and sustain various financial empowerment initiatives, and we do this primarily by offering one-on-one technical assistance as well as grant funds. We are excited to have worked with over 160 cities and counties across the country, providing more than $70 million in grant funds. As Jose mentioned, we are talking about Financial Empowerment Centers. This is a professional, individualized financial counseling program offered as a no-cost public service for all residents, and I'll go into detail about what this means. We are very excited to have worked with cities and counties for the past 10-plus years, helping them replicate this national program model. As you can see from this map, we have worked with cities that are large, small, West Coast, East Coast, and are very excited to have over 37 open and operating financial empowerment centers around the country with over 20 more partners in various stages of planning, like the City of Salinas. Through this professional, individualized, municipally-led counseling program, we're very proud to have had over 200,000 residents across the country, primarily low to moderate income, build more than 300, reduce more than $344 million in debt, and build more than $69 million in savings. As a national program model, there are various elements that every FEC adheres to that makes the program as strong and as impactful as it is. This is a no-cost public service. Anyone over the age of 18 can come in for services as many times as they'd like, and there are never any fees or charges. There are no income restrictions, program eligibility, or documentation requirements. Financial counseling in this model is individualized. We know that financial challenges are very complicated and thorny, and through this program, a client meets with one counselor in a private setting, going over their individual financial background, working towards that client's individual goals, challenges, and then getting tailored guidance from that professionalized, full-time financial counselor on individual action steps applicable to that specific client. So not a group setting, no cohort setting, but individualized, tailored, professional, quality financial counseling for residents as a no-cost public service. Financial counseling is very integrated. We know the community has lots of existing social services and program partners and activities going on. This is meant to be a supportive resource to help add support to clients going through other programs and to really add the supportive layer to the ongoing ecosystem the community has already built over the past several years and decades. The Financial Empowerment Center model is very data-driven. We're very proud to offer our partners a no-cost database that tracks over 200 data points per client. As a public service, we know it's important that you all be transparent and accountable for this public service, so we're very proud that this database will show the city and the community and the stakeholders in live time, all aspects of your performance, and how the program is serving your residents and the impact that it's making. We are hoping to launch sustainable programs. Our work at CFE Fund is not to launch pilot programs, but we are looking to invest in cities like the Cities of Salinas, who is committed to long-term, sustainable financial counseling as a municipal service. And lastly, perhaps the most differentiating aspect of the financial counseling model as opposed to other financial counseling programs is it is municipal-led, and I'll share more detail what that means. We believe strongly that cities have a vested interest in your residents' financial stability. You all have the authority, the convening power, to bring all the stakeholders in the community together under a shared vision for your goals for the city and the residents. We also know that there are lots of scams out there and consumer concerns, and so having a municipally-branded public service adds trust and legitimacy, where residents really need that trusted quality service amongst a sea of scams that do unfortunately exist out there. To clarify the structure, CFE Fund, we are the national convener. We provide initial startup grant funds, one-on-one support to our program partners, national learning community, best practices, database. But this is a local program. The City of Salinas decides to launch a Financial Empowerment Center. It is fully, wholly managed by the city. You all determine the direction, the priorities, the program partners, the funding, all aspects of it, really tailoring it to your community and your residents and where your goals for your city are. Counseling is often provided by nonprofit partners. Even though it's a public service and a city-led service, the city will do an RFP to select a trusted, community-oriented nonprofit partner to actually hire a program manager and two or more full-time counselors to actually provide service delivery. I want to clarify what financial counseling means in the FEC models. I know there is lots of flavors of financial counseling coaching and education. We are focused on helping individuals with their personal finance, so helping them get access to safe and affordable banking accounts, using their bank accounts actively, establishing credit, increasing credit, paying down their debt, building their savings, and as of this year, also preparing for legacy planning and actually protecting their hard-earned assets. This is not a curriculum-driven program, so just like going to the doctor, every client comes in and says, here's my financial background, here's my goal, whether it's reducing medical debt or dealing with an auto loan term that they're confused by or planning to be a homeowner, wanting more help budgeting with increasing housing costs and utility costs. And the counselor gives them individualized guidance over numerous sessions to see a difference in their financial profile. And I'll go over some of the statistics of how we've helped residents increase their financial capabilities. Every FEC is located in a different city or county, so of course, they have different demographics. But we do know that a majority of clients who come into the Financial Empowerment Center are low to moderate income. They are mostly women with lower incomes. The average income of an FEC client last year was $38,000. Their average debt was not much lower than that, at around $36,000. They're often working, often unbanked or underbanked, high housing costs. But we know that despite these financial challenges, they are still succeeding because of this individualized program. And you can see at the bottom of the screen that for clients who have increased their savings, it's been by a median of $1,400. For clients who've decreased their debt, it's been by a median of $2,400, increased their credit score by a measurable amount of at least 34 points. So despite all these financial challenges and situations, because of this no-cost program, individualized support, and ongoing no-cost support, we are seeing residents increase their financial abilities. I mentioned that the FEC is very integrated. Again, it's a locally-led program. You all decide where you want your priorities to be, but there are many opportunities out there of connecting financial counseling to your existing work, existing priorities, initiatives, your strong non-partners, and that can span a wide variety of government services, housing services, workforce, utilities, criminal justice-involved individuals. And the organization that serves people will come across people with financial challenges and you all could partner with to bring financial counseling to those residents. So as Jose mentioned, we are in this planning period. I meet bi-weekly with Jose and Crystal, and we are working towards understanding what it would mean to launch a Financial Empowerment Center in the City of Salinas. And so we are working towards seeing who would the city of staffing look like to manage this program, which office, doing an RFP, selecting that nonprofit partner, thinking through a training plan, marketing plan, securing fundraising, in addition to the grant fund CFE provides of $150,000 across the first two years. And we're just really excited to be here today and tomorrow, my colleague, doing this site visit, talking to many community members and stakeholders to get your thoughts, your inputs, and your support to move this public service forward. So I thank you for your time and happy to take any questions or comments.
Okay, Margaret?
I have a question about where this organization will be housed. Will that be within City Hall or will it be independent somewhere off-site? Have you thought that far ahead?
Yeah, so I think we're still in the planning process, but that's the exciting piece of it, is that it can be offered in person, and it's a great idea to think about geographic locations throughout the community to make it more accessible, like a library, community center, the United Way we toured today, but also remote services are also a great option for those who can't commute in for an in-person session.
Okay. And then, how many people typically run this type of program in other cities? Is it staff of two? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, it's a wide variety. Our larger programs have upwards of about 20 counselors. I would say most have three to five full-time counselors who can see about 150 to 200 clients per year across numerous sessions.
And then those councils will be managed by, I think you said, a department manager or someone overseeing the counselors, right?
Yes, and the city will release an RFP to find a nonprofit provider who actually employs the program manager and the counselors.
Perfect. And United Way's involved? Is that what I understand, Jose?
Yes, so what I didn't say earlier was that our folks from New York are here as part of a site visit, as part of the academy. And we convened an advisory committee of which United Way is a part of. And they actually brought the opportunity to us because they knew cities had to do it way back in October. And they've been helping us all along with supporting with letters, helping us write applications, that sort of thing. So they've been very involved in our, in our sit on our advisory group.
Excellent, thank you. There was a lot of talk about trust tonight, and I trust the United Way. They're very good decision-makers. Fantastic opportunity. Thank you for choosing Salinas. That's all I have.
Gloria?
And we would start this right away if we're to approve it tonight? Or when would it start?
Do you want to talk about the...
A start date.
...the timeline?
Yeah. So we're midway through. We've already started the sort of the planning. So we're working towards that checklist you saw at the end of the presentation. Accepting the $20,000 helps us, you know, pay for the things that we might need to do as part of that planning process. And we hope to, I think the timeline is probably, we're looking at the next 18 months or so. So we still got to develop the RFP, release it, then select a provider. Meanwhile, we're identifying funding. Part of our two-day visit is tomorrow, we have a funder's roundtable that we'll be convening because in other cities that you have foundations of banks that help support some of this, but the city funds the majority of it. But we're along the way already. We've identified some city funding. We may need to identify more. We may put in the RFP that the provider will also be required to give something as well, whether it be in-kind or annual funding as well. So there's a lot going on, and there's more money we qualify for through the FEC, an additional $150,000 over two years as we move on to implementation.
Another question. So this program would be also bilingual or other languages?
Yes, so we'll make sure that there is budget funding for translators and translated marketing materials, so it's offered in whatever languages your city's interested in.
Okay, great. Well, I'll tell you, thank you. This is a very much-needed program. Yes, thank you so much.
Really?
Are there any comments or questions?
Questions.
Questions. So in terms of sustainability, I think I heard a little bit that there's going to be a meeting with potential funders, kind of what's the sustainability plan and for how many years?
Yes, so CFE provides a startup grant that goes across the first two years. We work with the city to develop a targeted fundraising plan. So as Jose mentioned, it's usually a mix of public funding, of private funding. So part of this planning process we're in and these stakeholders we're meeting with tomorrow will be identifying potential public funding sources, ongoing community foundation support, bank funding. The valuable thing about the FEC program is the database, so you'll always have this very strong database of strong evidence that shows the impact of the program that supports fundraising.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Along the same lines of questioning of Councilmember Salazar in speaking to sustainability, if I could please pull up the slide that delineates the staffing components, I think there was a slide that had like one, part-time, full-time city employee, and then a few other folks on the nonprofit side. So Jose, you mentioned that there's, quote, "funding has been identified as of right now to continue and start this program up." Where is this funding coming from? Is it grant funding or is it general fund funding? And the reason I ask...
We haven't identified all the money, and we also need to identify the size of the program we want to launch. So the number of counselors is going to drive the amount of money we need to identify internally. We did early on identify some CDBG funds, working in partnership with Community Development because we had to identify those funds during a certain time period over the next, for the next couple of years. So we've done that. We've identified some funding there, a little over $30,000. But as we work with, I'll be in touch with the city manager, and we'll be talking through the size of the program and identifying what else we can contribute as a city within our budget and how much we need to fundraise, those sorts of things. So that'll be all part of the planning and the development of the RFP because, again, the size is going to drive the cost overall.
Okay.
The number of counselors.
All right. The reason I bring that up is because I'm fully supportive of the program, just to preface it with that. However, I do have concerns with the overall sustainability of this program because this kind of seems along the same lines of the conundrum the city got itself into a few years ago when it undertook so many homeless support programs that were one-time funds, which this, from the sound of it, is one-time funding for, you know, for two years of programming. But from then on, it sounds like it's really going to be up to us to continue to seek out the funding unless we take on that financial responsibility ourselves moving into the future a few years down the line. So in terms of sustainability, I guess more so directive or request of staff would be as we continue through this planning process, ensuring that the scope of the program is consistent with the city's real financial situation so that in three or four years, we're not having this conversation of we need to make up $200,000 to cover so-and-so salary plus additional programming, right?
Correct, and that's part of the planning process. So we want to make sure we have something sustainable that we would come back to bring to you before we launch. So this is approving the funding for the planning phase. We get a lot of great technical assistance. We have opportunity to talk to other cities who've done this, learn from their mistakes. Good news is, a lot of the cities started around 2020 and were built off of ARBA funding, but have been able to continue and sustain post-ARBA. And so there's a lot of great lessons learned. But again, that's part of the plan we'll bring forward with the city manager.
Thank you. Attorney?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Now, we identified where in our strategic plan this program fits in.
Trying to remember my staff report. I believe it's under... Don't have that in front of me. I did identify it in the staff report. If anybody could help me, and I didn't bring it with me.
The reason I'm saying that is because, you know, I mean, I think you heard every councilmember, this is an amazing program, and I think, you know, making sure it's in line with our strategic plan is important, but making sure that we find ways to make this service available. I mean, you saw the difference they could make for these community members. So, you know, as we go out and analyze what, or the size of the program, I want to make sure that we're intentionally identifying funding. Or maybe a discussion for the council in the future is, you know, what's our commitment to it, right, as part of our general fund or whatever that looks like? I know we're just in the beginning stages, but...
Yes, those are great. All the comments are great and on point. So part of what the council's been really focused on over the last several months has been housing, has been that sort of, as we develop housing opportunities, well, this is not housing counseling, preparing the community to be better financially prepared will help take advantage of opportunities in housing that are coming. So I think if you look at the entire ecosystem of what it means to help our community improve, this is also part of it. And so part of the conversation with Jose and the funders and the organization is, they're not going to do this unless we can really develop a sustainable model. This is not a one-and-off or a two-and-off. This is something, can we bring forward a sustainable model that sets us forward for, you know, five, six, seven, or eight years? So that's all going to be part of the discussion we will have with the council moving forward.
Great. And then, as we kind of identify what we want the program to look at, we're going to, part of it is, we're going to analyze what resources the city's already kind of funding. For example, through eco-housing, you know, I hear they have a first-time home buyers like workshop or something like that, so we're going to be looking at all that this side, make sure there's not a duplication of services, basically.
Absolutely, and that was a big part of our advisory discussion today is how, any counselors that we do hire, how we make sure they're part of a larger ecosystem. And we also have the ability in our RFP to identify focus areas if we want. You know, there's people who are drowning in medical debt. Is that, do we want to have a good referral system with our local hospitals? Do we want to focus really on preparing people for the housing market? That's really where this discussion started, as Renee was saying, in getting people ready to buy housing that may come on stock in a few years. And so there's some great opportunity, I think, with how we develop the RFP.
Then you're going to be convening partners to start bringing input as part of the process, right?
Yeah, and that's what we've been already doing the last, and that's what this site visit's been about, is meeting with those partners, and they've been hearing this presentation from Rose and Fernanda today.
All my questions, thank you. All my questions, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, let's go out to the public. Any comment on this? Any Zoomers? No, there is one. Is it Jose? Okay. Jose, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, you're on.
Okay, hi. Good evening, guys. Looks like a good program. I did have a couple of questions, though. I don't really believe that we will be able to reach the people we need to in those perspectives because how many of those people will be bilingual? We have a lot of people that are in debt, that are in low-income situations due to credit cards and other situations, a vehicle they might have purchased that was overpriced but they needed. How are they going to be able to communicate with these individuals? And how will they reach out to them? Are you going to have a public meeting for every district? Are you going to have these people go door-to-door? Are you going to have these people who are not computer literate, a lot of them, be able to reach out and talk to them? How do you plan to do that? Not only that, but do you really think that we could sustain a program like this? And like Mr. Barajas said, go back and then try to find funding for it? I feel like we try really hard to help everybody and anybody, but in reality, we can't. We can't really run our city. We can't really do things that we need to. It is a great idea. I just think we need more planning.
Thank you, Jose. All right, we will bring back this back to council. I think we're looking for a motion.
To approve?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's see, it's time here in thirds and fourths. Why don't we call for the question?
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLaRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
I will sever.
Motion passes.
Very good. We're good. All right, with that, we have continued the future growth area, and now we want to, wow, we want to go to a first substantial amendment.
Yes.
Pretty important word. So speaking of in court, here's Lisa Britton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Lisa Britton, Community Development Director. And the item before you is a first amendment, substantial amendment to fiscal year 2324 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And this amendment redirects $595,000 to the Sherwood Recreation Center Phase IV project. And so that project includes exterior repairs, accessibility upgrades, parking, landscaping, and other interior enhancements. Now, originally, $3.9 million was allocated over multiple years of Community Development Block Grant Funds. And based on recent bid openings, we saw a need to augment the project budget. And so it is being recommended that we add $595,000 to the Sherwood Recreation Center Building Improvement, CIP, and that $550,000 would come from the Republic Cafe Museum, which is at 37 Solidad Street, and $45,000 would come from the category of public service in the area of housing referrals and tenant landlord services. At this time, the Republic Cafe is in pre-construction, pre-development phase. So it's undergoing testing and conceptual design. And all the funding is being paid through state grant, regional early action planning grant. So we are not at the point where we are ready to move to construction. And with the housing referrals and tenant landlord services, the $45,000 was money that was not spent for this purpose in 2324. This year, 2526, we have actually allocated $83,000 towards Echo, plus an additional $20,000 for the city to do future direction towards this service of tenant landlords. And as previously discussed, timeliness is of importance when spending our Community Development Block Grant Funds. So there are times when we need to do substantial amendments like this to redirect funds to those projects that are ready to move forward. So for this reason, we followed our citizen participation plan, all noticing, and public review has been complied with in accordance. And this is not a CEQA, it's not a project according to CEQA. And this really moves forward your goals for serving youth. And there's no general fund impact. It's just shifting around our federal CDBG dollars. So with that, I'm available for questions.
All right. Very good. All right, this time we'll look to my right. Andrew, any questions on this? Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, thank you. Really appreciated the report. I understand the importance of this, but being that it is in your report, you know this Republic Cafe, I remember where there was a lot of hype, there was a lot of people out there. When, even though we're discussing the Sherwood Recreation Center, and I did ask the city manager already, but that money's not going to get lost. Because there's a hope
If the project moves forward in a timely manner, no, it will not get lost. And if there is future delay with this particular project, we would come back to the council to ensure that the money does not get lost and that is appropriated to projects that are ready to move forward. So at this point in time, it will not be lost.
Yeah, because if you go see it right now, the property, I mean, it was looking good at one time, but I'm afraid because we're not really maintaining it, somebody's going to go in there, you know, not with the inclement weather coming, they're looking for a safe place to live, and then they start a fire in there. So even though it's not about the cafe, I'm concerned that that project doesn't get lost somehow. Thank you.
I can go ask a question to help clarify that. Can you elaborate on how the city's position as an entitlement jurisdiction for CDBG ensures that the Republic Cafe funding will come back at a future date?
So as an entitlement community, we receive an allocation on an annual basis, and it averages about two point, let's say, $2.5 million plus per year. And that, and each year, we're required to prepare an annual action plan that budgets, projects that we see going forward in that fiscal year. And there is flexibility for carryover into future years. However, we do need to maintain a timeliness ratio. And we are going into our fourth year of not meeting a timeliness ratio. We have made great progress. So we've dropped from, the desired ratio is 1.5, and we have been as high as 2.7, but we're back down to 1.9. And so we're really getting traction with our projects and spending, but it's something that we do need to keep our eye on, and we are currently in a workout plan demonstrating that we're making progress towards our projects that we've identified.
Thank you. Can you speak to what are the consequences for the city of Salinas? If we don't take this action tonight and we don't meet that spend ratio, what are the consequences for our CDBG funding?
So the action tonight would not necessarily impact our spending ratio because it's actually, has to be spent. This is just an allocation of fund to a project. So that wouldn't have, tonight's action would not have a direct effect on the ratio at this point in time. However, it would assist the Sherwood Recreation Center with moving forward once we go through the rebidding process and having substantial funds readily available to move forward.
Thank you for that. And not a question, just a quick comment. I know comments come later. But just wanted to mention that this item did come before the Housing and Land Use Committee, and the Housing and Land Use Committee did recommend this for approval.
Thank you.
Yes, my questions were also in regards to entitlement, but you've answered those questions. Thank you very much.
Gloria?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Margaret.
No questions, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Anybody from the public?
Okay, good evening, city council. I did give an email to you at the last meeting with pictures, and then you have pictures on your desk of the Republic Cafe, well, of the Republic Cafe and some other buildings that are similar on Solidad Street. And the state funding for that is $1.4 million. So as you can see, those buildings need a lot of protection from the elements. They have to be cleaned up. The Republic Cafe has to be cleaned, and you can't just send in your maintenance people to do it. It has to be properly cleaned and protected so that it doesn't get further degraded. So in February, you had the strategic plan, and part of it was the Republic Cafe and Chinatown. And now this seems to me like you're, you know, taking that away and giving it to the project that was earlier. They, you say you're not going to do that project. So, yeah, I don't think that you should do this transfer of funds.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody on Zoom? There is not. Okay, back to council for motion. I think we're looking at motion to accept staff report.
I move to accept the staff report.
Second.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to call for the question or any additional comments? Councilmember Barrera.
Yeah, I'm with Ms. Shin. Mr. Mendez, we've got to look at that building, take care, because it's easy to, if somebody destroys it, it's going to be easy just to go demolish it, but that's history out there. So I don't know what our situation is as a city to, because it's, it's got problems out there. So I understand the need to transfer some funding, but man, I hope we don't forget about that. Thank you.
One additional comment, just to clarify. This was mentioned at the Housing and Land Use Committee meeting. ACE was also contacted, and they approved of the project as is, right? They're okay with the city pursuing, moving forward. They were noticed, and they understand that the funding will return at a later date.
I talked to Mary Hira Har yesterday, and that's not what he said to me.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments from the council? All right, let's go for the question.
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLaRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. All right. Okay, let's see. Okay, we are going to do consent. Matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council requests a separate vote for discussion. Members of the public may comment on the consent agenda items collectively during their public comment. Would any council member like a separate vote or discussion on any of the consent items?
To approve.
Okay, noted for the record. Anybody from the, anybody from the public? Any Zoomers? Call for the question? Okay, yeah, Jose.
Jose, go ahead.
The back committee, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. You know what? No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jose. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call for the question.
I'll go ahead and call for the vote for items 369, 374, and 386. I'll go ahead and bring the minutes back at the next meeting.
The minutes have been tabled, yeah, thank you for reminding.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLaRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yep.
Motion passes.
All right, with that, we will now hear from councilmembers on reports, appointments, and future agenda items. Andrew, we'll go ahead and start with you. Thank you. Well, first I want to thank the mayor and Tony Barrera for joining me at the Little League District Nine championship presentation. Just such a great event for all these youth. The gentleman who came up at the very end and said he's been in Little League since 1980, and this is the first time they've ever received any recognition from a city. So they really appreciate that. I really want to thank Esmeralda, who led that event, organized the folks, and got the name trial certificate, invited the mayor and the council. Thanks to Joey and David and Marisol, who joined us at that event. Thank you to Grocery Outlet for sponsoring the beverages. So thank the beverages and snacks. Again, congratulations to those District Nine champions. Tomorrow, I will be having a small business input session. It's open to the public, everyone's invited. It's going to be tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Thank you to Northridge Mall for hosting that. It's going to be between Hobby Lobby and JCPenney. They have a community room back there, so you're all invited as well. And I attended our Tamsi Rail Policy Committee. We had an update on the project update. Also, at my last Tamsi meeting, and I had talked to the city manager about this, there was an allocation of unspent funds, which seemed to be going okay until there was some recommendations made to fund some jurisdictions for more money. One, they didn't ask for more money. And then the second one was for a second project. I saw it as an opportunity to ask for some more money for Veronda Road. Perhaps I didn't articulate it properly, but it just didn't make sense the way that there was a push for additional projects. Fortunately, I lost the vote. I think it was like seven to six, or seven to four. And so I'm going to be looking to our city manager to help me understand what happened with that vote. And unfortunately, we lost that opportunity for money. It was maybe some horse trading going on or something going on. I'm still a little unclear. Trust? Trust, yeah. But, so everyone's invited to my small business input session the following week. I'm going to have a special events input session, and you'll all be invited as well, with the goal of having a subsequent meeting to find out, well, first to gather input on what the small businesses are seeing in our community, what their biggest need, and then with the goal to bring up a following meeting, have a follow-up meeting, bringing some of those resources and answers that they have. So that's all I got. Thank you. Okay, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, a lot of great things going on. You know, this coming Saturday, the El Sal students are having a car show. I'm planning on being there as well. Also, at the same time, they're having El Grito Parade, Radición para siempre. If you would like to be on a horse, let me know. And if you want to be in the parade as well, you can be in a car. Also, Sunday, you all received a white envelope there?
Yeah.
They got some great food at El Grito. I mean, you're going to have a great time. It's eight blocks of just nothing but fun. And, you know, great things have been going on. I appreciate the energy that's been going on in the city. And thank you, Councilmember Sandoval. Yesterday was a great thing. You know, we asked for a show of hands of how many people have ever been in this building?
I would say about half said no. Am I right?
About half said they've never been in here. But it was exciting that they were. So a lot of kids had a lot of fun. Also, Mayor and Mr. Mendez, I want to put a request, MST, there's a lot of good things going on with MST. I'd like to get a presentation whenever possible, hopefully maybe before December. I'd like to get a presentation whenever possible, hopefully maybe before December, if that's possible. I know you're a busy person.
And I'd like to be your buddy for that.
Hey!
I'm your buddy.
Times are changing. Thank you, Gloria.
Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. So over the past couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to engage in a few important efforts in our community. I recently joined the Advisory Board of Directors for Siembra Latinos, a program of the Community Foundation for Monterey County, which is doing meaningful work in Monterey County, uplifting Latinos, and strengthening our communities through economic opportunity. We have our annual event this upcoming Saturday, September 20th, down at Crew Winery over in Solidad. And this past Friday, I attended the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority Employee Communication Dinner to connect with the hardworking staff who keep our waste and recycling systems running efficiently alongside Councilmember Delarosa and Councilmember Sandoval. I also joined Community Human Services for their Day of Hope Celebration this past Saturday alongside a few other of my colleagues, Councilmember DeRigo, Delarosa, and Mayor Donahue, recognizing the programs and people who provide critical support to families and individuals seeking recovery from addiction. And they're part of the continuum of care services providers, and I've also requested site tour with them next Friday, so they'll be participating in. Regionally, I had the opportunity to attend the Monterey Bay Division meeting of the California League of Cities in Hollister. And I'm happy to report back that I was elected as second vice president of the Monterey Bay Division, where I look forward to continuing to represent Salinas and advocate for our region's priorities. Similar to Councilmember Barrera's comment, El Sal Middle School is hosting a car show this Saturday, and they've invited me to present one of the awards as a former alumni of El Sal Middle School, so pretty excited for that. Also, this Thursday, I'll be attending the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, SVBGSA, for those that need another acronym to remember, this Thursday. And I will be attending the Central Coast Community Energy, also known as 3CE, Annual Conference and Policy Board Meeting next week down in San Luis Obispo. Looking ahead, I just want to remind folks that I have a District One meeting coming up on September 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at La Paz Middle School, and we'll be focusing on police, fire, and economic development. And lastly, I have a District One community cleanup in Moore Salinas happening on Saturday, September 20th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM on Burke Street. Thank you.
Larelio?
Yes, just wanted to share, you know, last Friday, I mentioned this earlier during the council meeting, I had the opportunity to meet with members of the Protect Salinas Renters and the property management companies to hear about their position regarding the ordinances. Also, earlier on last week, also had an opportunity to meet with some of the physicians who are also part of the Protect Salinas Renters Group, had an opportunity to hear from them and their perspective as, as it relates to mental health. Also, on Sunday, I had an opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting ceremony organized by Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce. This was for craze barbecue and soul food over at El Dorado Park. We had great weather, great food, and it's really great, really exciting to see someone's vision come to fruition, and just, you know, great music, and kudos to everyone that helped out making it happen. Also, looking forward to attending the Siembra Latinos annual, annual event. As you know, they are going to have recognition on behalf of Alfred Diaz Infantes. For those of you that don't know, that was actually a program that I started when I was at the Community Foundation for Monterey County. I usually don't give myself kudos, but now that I'm no longer there, you know, it's really exciting to see that it's going on. For those that don't know, the entire intent was to get Latinos engaged and interested and increase their understanding of philanthropy as it relates to Monterey County. So again, the goal, bringing in Latino leaders, philanthropic leaders throughout Monterey County, to come together to raise funds and also to support local organizations that are Latina-Latino-led, serving the Latina-Latino community. I believe at that time, there were only 14 similar type of funds throughout the United States. And having attended this event in the past, it's a good one. You don't want to miss it.
Okay. Okay. Regional boards that I attended was the Executive Committee for the Salinas Solid Waste. I also had the privilege of, of attending the employees' dinner at Crazy Horse with Councilmember Barajas and Councilmember Sandoval, which, that's always great to see the employees, right? They have great employees. But, okay, so Crusaders Car Show, yes, Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. And it's a fundraiser to help El Sal Junior High. So yes, I'll see you there. I will not be able to attend the parade, Tony, because I have a very important birthday party to attend, and that's Mrs. Lea. She turns 95. So it's at the same time, and she's almost like a relative to me, like my tia. And so I apologize.
I will ride your horse.
Okay. But I will be there Sunday, and Adan told me that the program or the Mexican concert at 3:00, correct? Right? The stage? Do you know where it's going to be, Tony?
Yeah, right by the car.
Oh, okay, where it's always at. Okay, thank you. And then, let's see, tomorrow morning, I am going to be the host for the shared center. Some of the directors of Community Human Services, I think it's about six of them at 10:00 in the morning, so I'll greet them, and yeah, they wanted to see the shared center. That, and let's see, what else? And I have been invited, and I'm being, I was selected to, to be honored at the domestic violence, YWCA, on October 24th. So at the Al Silmar? Yeah, Al Silmar. So that's happening. I also want to thank the Knights of Columbus for all the hard work that they do in our community, and they had a great tri-tip dinner that you missed, Mayor.
No.
Yeah. But anyways, kudos to Knights of Columbus. And I'm also having the Echo Housing meeting on the 30th and at the Filipino Hall. And I, I chose that area because I do have a lot of apartments, and then also because of the church, the parishioners that attend Cristo Rey. So that's going to be good. And then, of course, I want to remind everybody about the community meeting on September 16th, where our, our chief is going to talk about the prostitution issues in, around the current street area, Hebron Heights, from 6:30 to 8:00 at Sherwood Elementary School. And that's my report. Mayor, but for future agenda items, I had mentioned in the past, I don't know what happened to the first Home Time Buyers Program. I'd like to see that or a report. We need that program back. And also, we used to have a 40, $40,000 or $50,000, I don't know if you remember, Tony, for a loan in a very, the rates are very low for revitalization of your home, to do a roof or whatever. So we need to, we need to bring those back. Okay? So that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Last but not least, okay. So we went to the League of California Cities event, was that yesterday? Yeah, last evening. We had a good, good group of us there, so I think we were well represented. I want to congratulate Jose on his new position. That's really exciting. I'm so glad it's you and not me. So when they asked, I said, no, call Jose, he'll do it. So that was good. I attended Simone Ray's annual meeting last week. It was, there were 350 people there. I had no idea. I thought it was just a, you know, a board meeting, but they invite the entire community to come out, so it was really well-attended. And there was a keynote speaker formerly worked for a hotel chain that's now putting a new hotel in Pacific Grove. It'll be open in December. And he, his presentation was all about low-hanging fruit and how to, like, in organizations and how to get people to go to work every day as it's opening, as if it's opening day. He had a lot of really good points. I'm going to share the PowerPoint presentation with you guys. I took copious notes, which I can't read, but he was so fascinating, and I think it was all about customer service, customer service. And I think we, as a city, can improve on that tremendously. His points were very well-taken, and these were not difficult things, and they didn't cost anything. It was just about attitude and such. So I thought it'd be good for us to all study up on that, maybe we can have a future conversation, but it was, it was excellent. This Saturday, a lot going on. Chicken barbecue at St. Paul's Episcopal Church on Pajaro Street from 12:00 to 4:00, if you want a nice hot chicken dinner. And then I am planning on attending El Grito, and I will ride a horse. And Tony, I just want to let you know, I'm deathly afraid of horses, especially big ones like that, but I'm going to face my fear just for you and Gloria. I'm going to do it. So I'll ride a horse. I'll wear jeans. And then I'm having my first listening session, hopefully on October 28th. Renee and Jose and I are working on that location to be determined. And then I'll be attending the Nightingale Breakfast, just to be a good partner there. And Ambag is tomorrow night, so I think I've got an event every night this week and then all weekend long, so it's going to be a busy one. And then the last thing is, I would like for a future, I've been talking a lot with the folks that created the economic development element. I was really impressed. I've heard, you know, a couple presentations. I didn't really understand the full scope of it, but now that I've, you know, really seen the detailed work that was put into it, I would like to request that we go back and revisit that, in addition to the staff report that was provided to us several meetings ago. And see, I feel like there's a lot of things in that development element that need to be paid attention to. So I know it's a big, huge document, but there's so much work that goes into it, so I really think I'm encouraging us as a council to bring that back up and go through and discuss how we can implement some, if not all, of the things that they're recommending.
I'm your buddy.
That's coming back to you anyway, the entire process, so that.
Fantastic.
We don't need, we don't need a buddy on that one.
Okay, excellent. I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're like minds. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. I did a lot of the same stuff, so I won't repeat it. You're right, I missed the tri-tip barbecue, and it won't happen again. I'll just, two things. I was invited to greet the, and Councilmember Barrera was there, I think the, the Al Sal District's Community Schools Summit was, was well-attended, and I think, and I think a good one, and really, really spoke to the importance of parental involvement and the student's education. So I was glad to be there. And then this, this Friday at noon, I join a array of electives, I don't know who they all are, at the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce to do, do the lightning round on economic development from various cities. So I will be, I will be on the, on the road to the peninsula on, on Friday. And with that, we are adjourned, and we have an important next council meeting on the 23rd. So thank you, everyone.